On are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudini, meaning over in the woods or amongst the redwoods. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in the dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. If you would like, please join me for the flag salute. Will the city clerk please call roll?
Mayor Matthews.
Here.
Vice Mayor Stillman. Councilmember Atkins Salazar.
Here.
Councilmember White.
Here.
Councilmember Schaefer is absent, but we do have a quorum.
If you would wish to make a public comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. If you are logged into Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for a public comment on the item you wish to speak on. If you are on the phone, press star nine on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial star six on your phone. For each item, we will be taking in-person public comment first and then move to online comments. We will not be going back and forth. So if you are wanting to make comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as public comment is requested for the item. Well, now move on to ceremonial matters. The first is a proclamation in honor of Older Americans Month, May 2024. And this will be read by Councilwoman Atkins Salazar.
Thank you. Whereas, May is Older Americans Month, a time for us to recognize and honor older adults. And whereas, through their wealth of life experience and wisdom, older adults guide our younger generations and carry forward abundant cultural and historical knowledge. And whereas, older Americans improve our communities through intergenerational relationships, community service, civic engagement, and many other activities. And whereas, communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds have the opportunity to participate and live independently. And now, therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata recognizes May 2024 to be Older Americans Month. This year's theme, Powered by Connection, emphasizes the profound impact of meaningful interactions and social connection on the well-being and health of older adults in our community and urges residents to join in promoting programs and activities that foster connection, inclusion, and support for older adults. And it is signed today by our mayor, Meredith Matthews. And we have today Maggie Craft from the Area One Agency on Aging here to accept this.
I guess it's short.
Yes.
And the font was big too.
Yes, that's how we roll. Thank you very much. I just have a few comments. Thank you for this proclamation this month. I wanted to talk a little bit and talk about how our lives are enhanced and improved by our relationships. And our communities are enhanced and improved when we have intergenerational relationships. The very act of having friends outside of our generation fights ageism. Once we get to know people we think are different simply because of their age, we realize we are more alike than different. All of us are here on a lifetime journey, just at different stops along the way. And wouldn't you want to know what roadblocks are coming? Sure, you still have to meet them on your own, but hearing from someone who has been there and gotten through it can help show the way. I look at a lot of my mentors and the older people in my life who mentored me. And while they didn't, they just, they made me not worry about my life moving forward. And they helped me see that there's all kinds of things coming. So I really appreciated it. Our agency, Area One Agency on Aging, has served Humboldt and Delnor County seniors and their families since 1980. We count on community support to continue our work, and we especially count on the support of volunteers to expand our impact. Volunteers drive people to medical appointments. They explain Medicare to older adults. And they advocate for people living in long-term care facilities. Our volunteers teach iPad classes. They teach exercise classes. And we are always looking for homeowners to volunteer to rent a room to an older adult who is looking for a safe and affordable place to call home. Thank you for recognizing older adults and the continuing contributions that we make to our communities to keep us all healthy and connected. Thank you.
Thank you, Maggie. Our next proclamation is in honor of Kinetic Sculpture Racing, May 25, 2024. And Princess Vice Mayor Alex Stillman will be reading this.
Okay, so kinetic sculpture racing. Whereas the art and sport of kinetic sculpture racing, difficult to truly comprehend but easy to enjoy, is a Humboldt County tradition originating in Ferndale and spreading gloriously to other parts of the planet and earth. And whereas kinetic tradition has been a part of Humboldt County life since 1969, and with at least one kinetic race starting in the Arcata Plaza for the last 50 years, not counting those two years when we were throttled by the global pan epidemic. Whereas the glorious founders of all the kinetic sculpture racing, Hobart Brown, a Ferndale artist, envisioned a three-day triathlon of art world, from Arcata through Eureka to Ferndale, over land, sand, mud, water, and coined it as many, such as an adult having fun so children would want to grow older. And if they are not living on the edge, you are taking up much too space, too much space. And whereas the Kinetic Grand Championship is a tribute to the rich history of kinetic racing in Humboldt County, Kinetic Universe, the Kinetic Grand Championship nonprofit organization body, works to promote the tradition and the values of kinetic sculpture racing in Humboldt County. And whereas several other cities across the world have kinetic sculpture races inspired by Humboldt County's mother race, unusually held on the Memorial Day weekend, recognizing that this art event involves the whole family, community, while also promoting tourism, sustainability, bicycling, and silliness. The race enhances our community's image both nationally and internationally. And whereas kinetic sculpture racing encourages the recycling of junk, tidying up our environment, while exploring sustainable transportation as a creative solution to greenhouse gas emitting automobiles, thus fighting global climate change. And whereas the Kinetic Universe presents the Kinetic Grand Championship that will challenge creativity, provide opportunities for artists and artist discovery, and lift community spirit and pride, resulting in the most glorious weekend of the year. Now, therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata hereby congratulates Kinetic Universe on its glorious dedicated stewardship of uniquely Humbodian kickoff. Is that right? Yeah. No, tradition of the kinetic sculpture racing. The council encourages everyone to attend the kickoff 2024 on Saturday, May 25. And it's on the Arcata Plaza, and it starts at noon. But you can go and see all of the kinetic racing vehicles and their support teams, and it's really fantastic. So I'd like to present this to Felix Flex.
Thank you for the glory. Yeah, they told me I should. They told me I should. So thank you so much to everybody in the room. My name is Felix Flex. I am a local drag Lesk performer here in the area and producer. I'd like to speak on my experience with the Kinetic Universe and what it did to me. I did not know much about kinetics going into the Ruta Bega Ball, which is a part of the Kinetic Universe as a whole. But it definitely changed my life and showed the value of community and the absolute love for our small-town community that we have and how much culture that we actually have. Being able to participate in the ball itself was very stressful, but it was the most glorious thing I have ever done, especially becoming the current year queen. So I encourage everybody to come out and in honor of Hobart Brown for the glory.
And our last proclamation is in support of Humboldt Lemonade Day, which is June 1, 2024, and Councilwoman White will be reading that.
Yeah, I'm super excited about the Humboldt Lemonade Day. Both myself and Mayor Matthews will be judges at this event, so looking forward to that. Also want to mention, my daughter participated many years in the Lemonade Day. So Humboldt Lemonade Day, June 1, 2024. Whereas Lemonade Day is a free, community-wide educational event that helps empower today's youth to become tomorrow's entrepreneurs. And whereas Lemonade Day has provided the online app, My Lemonade Day, to infuse today's youth with the basic business and entrepreneurial skills necessary to become successful contributing members of the community. And whereas Lemonade Day has a core philosophy of spend, save, and share, and that is implemented by teaching children how to manage their money by establishing a budget, seeking investors, paying for their own expenses, saving part of their profits, and then giving it back to the community. And whereas young people who develop entrepreneurial skills are also developing life skills that give them a strong sense of control in their lives that says, I have influence over my own life and I can affect the person I become. And whereas Lemonade Day offers opportunities for families, businesses, schools, youth organizations, faith-based communities, neighborhoods, institutes of higher learning, economic development, and government agencies to unite for a common purpose to train the next generation of entrepreneurs. And whereas, small businesses started by our community's innovative entrepreneurs have created the economic backbone of our local economy. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the City Council of the City of Arcata declares Saturday, June 4, 2024, Lemonade Day in Arcata, and urges the community to buy lemonade from local stands to support the next generation of entrepreneurs. The council salutes Humboldt Lemonade Day presenters, event sponsors, volunteers, and participants, and continues to commit investment in the future of our youth, dated May 15, 2024, by our mayor, Meredith Matthews. And unfortunately, Dan Kelly, who is the Humboldt Lemonade Day volunteer, is not able to make it today, but I will be sure to get it to him. Thank you.
All right, it's time for early oral communication. The City Council values your comments. This 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters that are not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set for a future addenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes. There will also be time for the public to comment specifically on each agenda item and again at the end of the meeting under item 12. Please make your way to the podium. Raise your hand if you are on Zoom or press star nine if you are calling in by phone and wish to make a comment.
Everyone, my name's Joanne McGary, and I remind everybody that I say my name just in case people are watching and they want to know who's that person speaking. I come here all the time. I send you emails all the time. Last email I sent you was in regards to three things, because I like to talk about three things. But before I go into those three things, I want to just say ceremonial matters are starting to really resonate with me, especially about older adults, because I am one, and the value we have in our community cannot be understated. And that's why I'm able to come here, because I have the time and opportunity and desire to participate in this city council meetings and other meetings. But the three things I wrote to you about were the city declaring themselves are joining the International Cities of Peace Organization out of Dayton, Ohio. I think it would be really valuable for us to take a stand for peace and join hundreds of other cities around the world that have committed to being a peace city. So that was the one thing. The second thing I suggested was actually, along with calling at the Arcata Peace Plaza, maybe really starting to work on that name-back and perhaps land-back concept of the Wiat people. I've been learning a whole lot of history about this place, and I really do think it's time that we gave serious attention to what happened in the past and moving forward in the future with respect to the people who were here before 1850. Finally, the Redwood Peace and Justice Center sign. Hopefully, we'll talk about that later as well. But I really would love for us to have a third place as a Redwood Peace and Justice Center. And I have the sign willing to donate it, and let's have a place where we can gather and find peace and justice.
Thank you.
Good evening, Gregory Daggett. Next month is the third anniversary of that tragedy in Surfside, Florida, where the mid-rise that collapsed, killing 98 people. This was extensively covered in the New York Times as far as all aspects of why it fell, who was responsible, and the lawsuit and settlement, which was, I'll note, was over $1 billion that went out to the victims and also residents of that tower that survived. I would say that they also looked at who was going to be responsible from the standpoint. So that was the financial. So they were actually looking at who they were going to drag into court. And the contractor that did the construction for it, it was back in the 80s. He went out of business and he was dead. So he wasn't the one party that was going to be responsible. So I'll say that one party that was a brand-new building on Miami Beachside, which is the second city, and that high-rise actually had to pay $200 million to part of that settlement just because they built, you know, a block away. And the fact was that possibly that the vibration from digging the foundation contributed to it. So I want you to think about that, because I have time running out here that I'm going to have to add a little bit longer. But it is related to Arcata Fire District letter that was sent to you from the standpoint of possibility, what would happen if we went ahead and built seven stories without having the support from the fire district? And we could bankrupt the city. And also, people that were part of the decision-making of that would have to explain that. So I'll go in a little bit more detail later. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good afternoon, I'm Fred Wise. Two years ago, in a discussion I had with the city manager, I brought up what I regarded as areas that I felt the city puts itself at potentially, potential risk for lawsuits. And I told her that at that time, that it was very unlikely that I would institute a lawsuit, because what I believe, that I would provide information for a party that might. As such, I felt that it was critical that all procedures be done in a manner as straightforward as possible. We have a situation now where not everything is being done, in my opinion, as straightforward as possible. The, last night, the planning commission passed a recommendation for the final environmental impact report. I think it puts the city at risk for potential lawsuit. The, the city attorney made a suggestion that was clearly rejected by the council, and I thank you for that, about public comment being only in person, not by Zoom. That would seem to violate the tenants of the Brown Act law. I was disappointed in the city attorney on that. And we have a situation with the Arcata Fire District's letter, which seems to be minimized by city officials in print, in their speaking, in their attitudes, and in their actions. I am optimistic that the situation that the Arcata Fire District has proposed will work out, but it may take three to five, five years for it to happen. In the meantime, the city may be greatly at risk. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to make in-person public comment? Do you have anybody on Zoom? All right, let's move on to the consent calendar. All matters on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion. There is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, that item is removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. Item A is approve the minutes of the city council meeting of May 1, 2024. B is bi-weekly report on disbursements. C is adopt resolution number 234-51, authorizing the execution of the certification and assurances and authorized agent forms for Low Carbon Transit Operations Program, LCTOP, for the following project: Arcata and Mad River Transit System, A and M RTS, free and reduced fares in the amount of $28,712. And D, adopt resolution number 234-50, accepting a public access easement on a portion of assessor's parcel number 505-121-034 and 505-121-031. Would any council member like to remove an item from the consent calendar? Okay, is there any member of the public that would like to request an item removed from the? Okay, somebody want to make a motion?
I would move to accept the consent calendar.
Oh, second.
All right, we have a motion by Vice Mayor Stillman and a second by Councilwoman White. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, consent calendar passes, and let's move on to old business. Item A is to receive an update on the progress of the Arcata wastewater treatment facilities improvement project. Can we get a SAF report from city engineer and environmental services director? Excellent, thanks.
Okay, good evening, mayor, councilmembers, members of the staff, members of the public, and members of staff. In front of you today is a quick update on our wastewater treatment facility project. This is one of our largest projects we have started. And we are almost halfway there. So we thought it would be a good time to just give a quick update on the project. Over the last five to 10 years, we have given multiple updates on the project. So today's goal is just to focus on the construction activities and the next phase what we'll be doing. So if you have any other questions, we can answer that. But today's goal is to just to focus on the construction. Project goals have not been changed. Project goal has still the same. Project is mainly compliance-driven and aging infrastructure. So we are replacing and rehabilitating most of the structures in the wastewater treatment facility area. What our plan is today is to show you some of the pictures from the construction and go over some of the construction activities. So before we do that, we just wanted to orient you where, when I say Hauser Marsh, where that is. When I say Oxidation Pond, where that is. So this is a map that shows our wastewater treatment plant, which is core area is here. This is South G Street in this area here. This is Redwood Curtain, so you know. And this is Oxidation Pond 1, 2, Treatment Marshes here. It's the Clop Lake, Hauser Enhancement Marsh, Allen Marsh, Gerhardt Marsh, and we call this Brockish Marsh. So these are the area. We'll be, will not be discussing every single element, but this is just to orient you where we are. As I said, we will be just focusing on the construction. As we awarded the project in September of 2022 to Walden Construction, and right after that, we started the construction work. In the last month of 2022, we were just doing the paperwork, submittals for the construction. And right in January, we started our actual digging work. So we had a groundbreaking in January of 2023, and we started the work. First and most critical work was ultraviolet disinfection equipment. We had started that work even, even before awarding the project to the contractor. We had started two years before that design and procurement of that. So we, in this picture, you will see the work we have done. We are utilizing our existing disinfection system basins, which was chlorine disinfection process. So this was our old area where we used to disinfect our treated wastewater. And here you'll see we are demolishing that and putting channels for UV. This is one of the UV channel. And then you can see the UV in place and with channels, in the channel. And this is completed part of UV. So UV is fully functional, and we are running our wastewater through it, and it's working well as planned. I would say right now for the UV component, 98% of the work is complete. This was partly funded by CDBG Community Development Block grant for initial phase and then for the construction phase. So there was some funding deadlines, so we were able to do that project, and we were able to use all of that money for the project. So that was good news for the city. Next is Hauser Pump Station. This is the area where we just recently constructed our boat launch area at the end of the parking lot at the South I Street. Here in the picture, you will see initial work here. This is Hauser Marsh fully vegetated. And here, digging for pump station. And this was a water bladder just for protection. And this is completed work that you see. The thing that I would want to focus on this one is when we were working here, we understand that we had closed the area, but contractor was pretty reasonable, and they were not doing the work in the weekend. They were working with the public and allowing access to the marsh area and the parking area when they could. At the same time, the project was occurring on South I Street for the boat launch project. So the two contractors have to work together. And they showed a very good partnership, and they worked together. And we were able to work with them properly or in a good manner. No fighting, I mean, between the two contractors. Other component is foundation. You know, as you know, we are building the wastewater plant near the bay, and there was Bay Mud there. So foundation is critical. It is a critical facility, so we had to design that very well. So just wanted to give you overview of how the foundation looks like. This is the area for the new electrical building, where they were coring and putting piers for foundation. Depth of each that pier that you see here is, is 75 to 80 feet long. The diameter of that is 36 inches. And 32 of these were installed for the electrical building, just for the electrical building. 32 of these were installed. Here you will see, when we did our, just wanted to maybe share a story when we just put our first or second or third pier in place. And they put everything in place. And when they came the next morning, they saw that one of the pier has dropped at least 24 inches. And it was a combination of their not knowing the ground and having to work it out so that it doesn't settle. But moving forward, they were able to fix that, and they were able to do a better job at moving forward. This is, again, electrical buildings. Just wanted to show you the progress. The work for electrical building actually started in early 2023. And I would say today, we are in April 2024. Still, only 20% of the work is complete. There is a lot of work to be done in the electric building. There will be a lot of electrical panel that will go in. So there's 80% of the electric building work is still remaining. As you know, around the marsh, we have to connect our wastewater treatment plant headworks area to the Hauser Marsh and to the Brockish Marsh. So there were a lot of conduits, a lot of trenches to put electrical and low voltage, I call it, for control systems. You see, I just wanted to show, show this here is, this is the trench that goes from our wastewater plant to Oxidation Pond. So you will see all these conduits here. It's like in one trench, there are 60, 60, 60 conduits. And they will supply power and control to the editors at the Oxidation Pond. This trench that goes to Hauser Pond, it has only six conduits. We have planned for future also, so there are additional conduits in each trenches. And also, you will notice there, the color of the concrete is red, because whenever, every time there's a high voltage, we want to make sure, like somebody's digging, they know it's dangerous. So it's, the color is red throughout the project. Anywhere there is electrical conduit, it's red concrete. Anywhere there's electrical conduit, it's red concrete. Other component is clarifier, which, you know, is like a settling basin where we separate the water, wastewater and the sludge. This was installed in, this is the clarifier number two installed in 1970. Since then, it has not been rehabbed. So there is a rehab process in happening. So this is the existing condition and then currently they are working on it. And this is the picture as of maybe few weeks ago, still in works. And they, we plan to complete this work by the end of this year. And this is the other, as you know, as a part of the project, we are moving our discharge location. So we call this new discharge location 003. So this is the original picture where we took early on on the project without the discharge location here. And this is during construction and now this is functional. So water is discharging to 003 as of today or like as of early this year. So water is there. I went through very quickly on most of the pictures, but you know, I just wanted to emphasize on it's not all just work. There is some fun also at the work. You are in the Arcata Marsh Wildlife Area, so you get to see beautiful birds, not only us, the contractors are excited. And on the other side, you'll see a picture, that's a picture from summertime. We, as a team, we all work together, contractors, city staff. So our consulting team and contractors, they put together lunch for the whole city team and their team, where we came together and worked. And I'll talk more about that maybe later, but here, this. Anyway, I'll just talk about that here. What I wanted to talk about is, I think that might be last presentation, I mentioned the same thing. It takes the village to do a project like this. This is a large-scale project. One agency, two agency cannot do a project. It's a combined effort. So what I wanted. Able to work with the contractors, consultant teams, state water board from the funding side, permitting side, coastal commission staff, all working together to make this project successful. And in the corporation yard, staff are working, they are operating the system, running the wastewater plant, also helping with the construction. And that's the key part of the work. Our existing staff who are already doing the operation there also, because contractor needs information on the operation, what to stop, when to begin for the work. So they have to schedule with the operation staff. So it's a critical piece of work that they have to work. So what I want to shout, give a shout out to Rachel Hernandez, Chad Scott, that how they are doing their job and also working with the contractor, so the project can keep on moving. And there were times, there are so many stories, like you know, sometime Chad has to come on the Sunday because they found something which was overlipped on Friday. So they're just all trying to work together. So that's that. And there is, as I said, we are midway of the project right now and there will be 18 more months of work, maybe more. There are still some improvements to be done at Allen Marsh. Most of the work is complete, but it will be happening this year. There will be modification to existing oxidation ponds. We have installed only eight editors right now, but there are 16 more to be installed. So that will be happening this summer and early next year. We need to install more electrical work and standby generator that will be happening. And also instrumentation and control improvements will be happening throughout the project. I'm not sure schedule is here or next one. Here, so I will let Emily speak now.
Great, so while all of this construction has been happening, it's also been happening in the public access area of the treatment plant, so through our enhancement marshes. And just really want to acknowledge that there have been, you know, impacts, short-term impacts, changes for people of getting to their favorite marsh trails for this latest closure. It started right after Godwit Days, a great Godwit Days in April. And then we've had a planned closure for a month. So that will go through mid next week. And, you know, we really have been trying to get the word out as much as possible on the city's social media. We've had detours posted for walking and biking. We have a really helpful closure alert application that's available on the city's main website. And, and also our staff at the interpretive center have really noted that, especially since there are closures, closures last summer, that people seem aware of it and recognize that it's needed really for critical infrastructure in the city. Unfortunately, there's a lot of other trails open at the marsh. But I just really want to thank the community for their patience during that time. When I've been out at the marsh, I've seen people, you know, walking and then see the trail closed and the fences up and turn around. And I always say, thank you, enjoy your day. So the, we'll have trails back open mid next week. But then we also anticipate another closure for at least a week in the Butcher Slough area where the Bay Trail crosses. So a big thank you to the community for patience during this time.
And then the final million dollar question is where the money comes from for the project. So total project cost as of today is 67 million, approximately $67 million. Out of that, construction, actual construction cost, the bid that we got from Walland is for $51 million. We added approximately $51 million. We included 6% contingency just to see unforeseen conditions because, you know, it is an existing infrastructure. So we will find definitely unknown stuff and which we have found, so we are using that contingency. So the total, total actual construction cost is approximately $54 million. $10 million is construction management and design cost. So that design includes initial design for the project as, plus design help during the construction phase of the project. And also it includes construction management and administration. So that's how we are paying our consultants who are helping with the construction management. Anytime we need any environmental help, then this is the funds that we are using. And this is also helping fund city staff time. So when city staff spends time, we are able to reimburse that fund for the city staff. So that's the part of money, $10 million. And as I mentioned earlier, for our UV disinfection, we have got some funding from CDBG. So that was in the amount of 2.0, approximately 2.5 million dollars. We have used that, so thank you to David's team for that. And as I said, total was 67 and 64, approximately 64 million dollars is from state water control board, which is in the grant. There are certain elements of the project. There is one, one big item is an insurance component because we are close to the bay and earthquake. That was not covered by the state water fund. So we, our wastewater fund will be covering that. That's approximately a little bit less than half a million dollars. So that's the cost of the project. As of now, we are anticipating the project to be completed by June 30, 2026. Original plan, our original schedule was to complete the project in December of 2025. However, due to COVID and the material supply, we are not able to get the material on time. So it got delayed because of the material supply. Our team is working very closely. Project could have been delayed by more because of the availability of the material, but our design team is working closely, it's just coming up with an idea so we can keep this schedule in place. So our goal at this point is to keep the schedule in place of June 30, 2026, construction complete. So with that, oh, you know, sorry, yes, we have more on this one. So as we are doing the project, I'm sure you have maybe questions on next phases. So I will again pass this to Emily, who will be.
Great, so while it has been an enormous effort and continues to be to implement Phase 1 of the Arcata wastewater treatment facilities, you know, improvements, we're actively planning for what comes next and in particular, what comes next after the design life of the current project, which is really envisioned through 2055. And our, while we had conceptual ideas of what would come next as a Phase 2, those designs are really currently on hold, pending further analyses to make sure that we're preparing the Arcata wastewater treatment plant of the future for future sea level rise and coastal hazards. So we have fortunately three concurrent efforts happening right now and they're all, they're all kind of linked. And so we had a request from the coastal commission to really further analyze coastal hazards and really see what adaptation plans could be for the future of the wastewater treatment plant after 2055. Fortunately, we also received a grant from the coastal commission through their local coastal program planning grants to really further delve into and refine modeling for a risk or vulnerability assessment, both for increased sea level rise, which we anticipate on Humboldt Bay, as well as, you know, increase of both coastal tidal flooding and fluvial flooding. So we're in the middle of that right now, really modeling what those potential coastal hazard scenarios could be and the frequency and the, you know, depth and duration of flooding. And that will really inform then the adaptation planning and options that we will look at with the community, with the council for the future wastewater treatment facility. So that's kind of one, one effort. And that effort is also really informing a second effort that is funded by the state water board. And they've funded technical assistance. And we just have an approved work plan this month and the work should be starting this month in earnest with support from the Rural Community Assistance Corporation, RCAC and GHD, lots of acronyms. But that team is providing the technical assistance to look at not only what it would take and the impacts of remaining in place and planning for sea level rise at our current location, but what could be some alternative sightings? What could be some additional decentralized treatment facilities throughout the city? How would that impact not only wastewater treatment, but our sewer infrastructure? Because everything runs downhill to the bay and fortunately, gravity is on our side there. But it's a, we're really taking a bigger picture, look at how we're going to treat wastewater into the future. We anticipate having some workshops and community outreach associated with a feasibility study, the first of which we anticipate to occur in the fall. And that will really bring in and allow, you know, us to discuss the, kind of some initial work from both the sea level rise risk assessment, the feasibility study and planning for future levy augmentation and inform the community more thoroughly about those concurrent efforts. And as I said, that third piece, which is, we've had a FEMA-funded levy augmentation grant that we're really currently in the conceptual design phase four and the intention of which is really to provide further protection up to current flood and FEMA standards for the core area of the treatment facility. So those concept designs and planning for that are happening right now. And then any permitting and future work on the levy augmentation will, will come after the outcomes of the feasibility study. So just wanted to provide a quick overview of the kind of three concurrent intertwined efforts for planning for the future of what comes, what comes next. And, and with that, I think can bring it back to the council for any questions you may have of nature.
I don't, I don't have questions, thank you for that. I will say that I, there's been very minimal negative feedback, at least that I've received since the beginning of this. And I'm almost afraid to say it out loud, but no disruptions in services, everybody knock. And so I think that that does speak really truly to what you were telling us about the teamwork and, and people collaborating to work, to work together. Because a project of this magnitude, I mean, it could be very different, what we're experiencing. And it's just, it's been very minimal, just so, thank you to everyone.
Yeah, I walk the marsh quite often and I will speak also to that, that the contractors were very accommodating. In fact, they moved equipment so that we could go through. We're like, no, no, we'll walk around, it's okay. And they're like, oh, no, we got this. So it was quite nice.
Well, from the friends of the Arcata Marsh and the tourists, they have not, they've just readjusted where they go and what they do. And it's been just fine.
Yeah, thank you so much for that update. I think it's really important for us to kind of check in at all these stages and to hear where we are at midpoint and to see what we're doing in the future was really great to hear, I appreciate it. I am going to open it up for public comment. If anybody has anything they want to speak about this agenda item?
So my name's Joanne McGary and I'm glad to see where $64 million is going. The marsh is a fabulous place. It's, when it was first created, it was, you know, something very different than what normal communities were doing with their wastewater and sewage. And so I think this is wonderful. Sea level rise is a significant factor and I'm very happy to hear that thoughts are being given to decentralized opportunities in the future so that we're not necessarily having to put all our eggs in one baskets or let's just use the euphemism, eggs in one basket of a wastewater and sewage treatment plant in our community and that other opportunities for either a retreat site when sea level rise becomes too large or a decentralized model of handling wastewater and sewage. And I hope Dave Couch is interested in participating in some of these discussions because in informal conversations before council meetings, I've talked to him about some of these other models of decentralized treatment plants, you know, that are basically housed within a complex, a building complex, such as what might be considering in any new development in places such as the Gateway. So, you know, sea level rise is significant issue. And I'm glad we're doing what we're doing now to handle with the ultraviolet and, you know, all that. Levy augmentation is an old-fashioned concept, I think, that we really need to, you know, really revisit. Like I say, what are we going to do for the future when the, the water takes over? So I just appreciate all this. There was a weird accounting thing. There was the block grant money that was 2 million and something. And I didn't hear your explanation because that put it over 64 million. So anyway, this is great to hear about and know. And I appreciate the public being filled in on a lot of this. But decentralized for the future is, and retreat.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that, or the visuals and, and the financial end of it. I would note that Coastal Commission, when they approved this, it was, it was probably a pretty easy decision because it dealt with water quality. And this is something that was a requirement from the state of California. We weren't in compliance any longer. So, you know, it's, it's just dealing, not dealing with the levies. The levies is a whole different issue. And there was a separate letter from our city manager that was, that was part of that and which was denied, which was, had to do with the levy improvement. So I think that's a sign of, you know, sort of what the future of these other projects in Phase 2, that they're not really on board and that's what I've heard. They're not, they're okay with the water quality. They sort of gave you a timeframe. You know, this is a very old plant that's in a, not a very good location for sea level rise. And it's not something you want to keep pouring money into because you start adding up the 67 million, which sort of started out at 53 million and then just kind of kept on creeping up. And, I mean, I didn't even know it was 67. I always thought it was 64, according to the sign in front of the, of the plant there. So you add, you add on what, you know, Phase 2, which, which is, I assume has to do with levy improvements. And that's a lot of money. And you, you question when you add that up with the 67, you could have just moved the plant someplace else. And that's basically what the coastal commission is telling you to do by 2055. And that's why you're, they're investing in giving you grant money to look at the long-term qualifications of, of all this. So, you know, I just question, I'm perfectly fine with Phase 1. I was actually called in and, and was in support of that. But I'm not on board as far as this whole levy dumping it in because you got to think about where they're coming from this too. This, that was the bay, that was not land there, you know. It basically got filled in by those settlers that you've talked about in the beginning of every, every session here. And then it turned into a dump. And, you know, they, we did something good in the past by turning that dump into the wastewater treatment facility. But it's just not a long-term solution for the city to, to keep investing into that location. It's, what they're doing right now is fine, it's good, but in the future, we need to. It's, what they're doing right now is fine, it's good, but in the future, we need to have a better plan. Thanks.
Thank you.
So rabbits breed rather quickly, and we also have a dog and cat population, mostly marsupial problem, which could be used for the hairpins. We should be able to cover all costs of manufacturing and pay $5 an hour and encourage $2 an hour go to furthering the education of the prisoners in jail, whether short term or long term. We also should be able to de-privatize some, some of the colleges by doing such. So if we stop shipping the, well, I was wondering, where's the Arcata?
We're, we're taking comment right now on this agenda item, which is on the wastewater treat-
Okay, so where's the Arcata wastewater treatment?
The wastewater treatment plan in the marsh. That's what we're taking comment on right now.
So in the next 66 years, it's going to be 66 inches and the area is going to be completely flooded, right? So if we actually, we, we actually consider the risk assessment, the, it's already flooding near Brio. So what we need to do is pull out some invasive species and be paying people to do a summer program, especially in high schools and the college, to do such. Part of the hairband idea. So if we use hairband, and I won't, somebody had heat burners, but sorry. I want to keep on bringing my ATP, I have seizures and autism. My grandfather was top secret government, and he was a trillionaire here in California. My name is Naomi Lurie Malar. So we want to update the hairband. 1.5%. I wanted to have a local nonprofit worker, and I'm also a non, local nonprofit worker, invest in communal needs works and be able to invest with the city. You know, like, it's actually like, he's, he's just been helping me out. I can't see right. I, I do need to lie down and get up, sorry. I haven't taken my second pill. So 70%, oh, 9% is to move and invest a current infrastructure approved of by the city and myself, because we should be able to make over trillion dollars, and especially if we patent it in every, every, everywhere around the world, because you have to think about that, which should cost about $10,000 per a country, approximately, you know? And PM costs, et cetera. So talking quite, quite a bit, maybe, and trillion, maybe I should lower the, the amount, 2.5. So 70% after manufacturing costs, I'd like to go to Naomi Lurie Malar for different funding, like, because I would like to create, as we go along, different cities, especially along the coast and areas where we have a low, or actually say, high water table. And especially as people start going more vegan because of our environment and our breeding ratios, you know, the breeding curve goes like this for the human race, we need to do this appropriately, right? So the hair-
Okay, thank you so much for your comment. Thank you. Those be my opportunity to talk at the end of the meeting, okay? Thank you so much. Do we have anybody else in the public that wants to talk on this agenda item? Is there anybody on Zoom?
We have none online.
All right. Thank you again. I really appreciate that. We'll have you back in a little while for some more updates. Thank you. All right. All right. Here we go. Let's consider some minor changes to the general plan 2045. Can we have a staff report from Community Development Director David Loyah?
Good evening, council. Get situated here a little bit. Okay, so I, I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I want to orient you to the materials before we get into them. But the purpose for tonight's meeting is just to take a look at the changes that have happened between December 12, when the general plan was released of last year, and what the Planning Commission and, and community have made input to the Planning Commission and what they've ultimately now recommended at their meeting last night. So just to orient real quick, from our Strategic Infill Redevelopment Landing Page, or SERP page, you can find the general plan updates by clicking on the large general plan button. And we've got these updated now so that they're, they've got the current PC 2405 resolution approved general plan and, and other documents that we won't talk about tonight. And so the public can now review those updated documents. And these documents are in track changes form, so the, as you peruse through the document, you'll see, oop, I thought there was one here. You'll see, there is one there, yeah, right in the middle there. Something ongoing on the page there, but there's, you'll see the track changes in these documents. And these are reflective of the attachment that you received to your staff report. So let me just walk you through this real quick. In the staff report, we have the, the Attachment A, which includes a list of the changes that have been recommended and what the Planning Commission did with them. So they're listed by topic. Typically, this is the policy number, so CM 5E is the circulation and mobility policy 5E. There's a description of what the change was, and this is a very brief description. These came in as more lengthy recommendations from the public, and those are all included in, in the record as well. There was a staff recommendation, and then what the decision was based on the decision-making body. Most of these were Planning Commission decisions. And so we gave you the, who the body was and what the approval was. So you can see most of these were unanimous decisions. There are a couple here that include city council decisions. And these other columns here, forget these, these are just my columns that I added after the fact so that I could tell whether I wanted to see them as I was making the changes. So all of these should be reflected in the general plan that you see online right now. In fact, as we were going through them with Councilmember Atkins Alizar, realized there were maybe a couple that were, were missed, and so I'll point those out to you as well. So let me just jump into the presentation here, and I'll orient you to the parts that I wanted you to focus on before we get into the discussion. Couple of things, it's expensive to, to make these changes, to have our consultants go in and change the, you know, the underlying documents, to, to change the maps in particular. And so, you know, I wanted to make sure that we're asking them to modify these as few times as possible. And so there are certain areas where you will see, you know, for instance, on the L Street corridor, where the council said, hey, we want this segment to be a Woonerf, we want it to be identified as a Woonerf. This hatching right here shows a Woonerf, and this does not. And so I just wanted to point out that the idea here is that when we, when we have a final approval, the city council has said, yes, that's what we want this to be. We're going to change these documents, we'll go in and change the mapping. For now, there's just an indication in writing here, and you'll see that sporadically throughout the documents. I also wanted to point out, and this came up the Planning Commission last night, a couple of public members have been concerned, in particular about the so-called Craftsman's Mall infill opportunity zone, highlighted in dark black line here, that there was a mistake, that the entire area had been designated residential high. I can totally understand why they misunderstood the mapping here, because there's a big RH right in the middle of this thing. The residential high district is shown with the crosshatching. And so residential high is crosshatching here, and the residential medium district is below the Craftsman's Mall project in the Sunset neighborhood. This is what was ultimately recommended by the Planning Commission, and that's what's shown on the map here. I also wanted to point out a couple of other changes that the Planning Commission made since you last saw these in the land use element. These parcels here have been converted to commercial mixed use. In the Zanzi subdivision, this is Giuntoli, Valley West, Valley East, and Mad River Business Park. And so one small change in land use designation there. And then in Alliance and Spear, here's the 30th Street subdivision here that the Eurocanine Housing Authority has built out, and the Arcata Mobile Home Park, which is high density as well. The Planning Commission took a look at this and said, hey, this is zoned residential or designated residential low density currently, let's make this residential medium. And so that's comparable to the designation that's in the Sorensen subdivision or the, across the creek here. And so that was a change in land use designation since the last time you saw this, I wanted to draw your attention to. Another one, because this is really a shift from policy, now there's a lot of shift from policy, so I'm not obviously going to point them all out, but one that I wanted to bring your attention to, because some folks in our community do rely primarily on wood for their heating. The current policy in our existing general plan prohibits installation of wood burning appliances in remodels, additions, or new construction. So if you're building a new building, you can't put wood heat in, you have to put in some other form of heat. The Planning Commission wanted to go one step further and say, you can't replace your existing wood stove. And so if your wood stove fails, you need to replace it with some other type of heating. And I wanted to make sure that the city council understood that, and either said, no, we want to change that and remove the replacement component, or that, yes, you're okay with the replacement component, making sure that folks would have to replace those wood stoves when they're no longer functional. Here we get into a couple of PC recommendations that were made that, for one reason or another, did not make it into the track changes version of the general plan. They are listed in your table and should have been incorporated in the track changes version. One was in regards to implementation measure LU9 in the land use element. There was a recommendation by Commissioner Mayor that the Planning Commission approved partially to ensure that the, if we're going to take this residential low density rezone program on, which would look at rezoning residential low density to either residential medium or residential high density based on future planning work. It doesn't change the zoning now, or the land use designation now, but it says in the future, we should take a look at this. And it mentions specifically Bayview, North Town, Arcata Heights, and Sunset neighborhoods. Now, the Bayview, North Town, Bayview and Arcata Heights are actually neighborhood conservation areas. And so Commissioner Mayor was interested in seeing that the rezone in neighborhood conservation areas recognized the design characteristics in these neighborhoods. It's kind of where the, the commission landed. And so I would offer that this red line strikeout is not in there now, but we would update it based on their recommendation, obviously according to the council's direction. And then one other, there was a desire to see the Plaza as, having the possibility, having the, the policy background for the possibility of having the, the plaza be a car-free zone. So no cars allowed on the plaza. And that change did not also make it into the red line- And so this, again, based on your direction, would be incorporated into the versions that are online right now. So those are the things I really wanted to draw your attention to in this presentation. This is sort of a, I look at this as like a soft opening, if you will, for the council. You haven't looked at the general plan in several months. Planning Commission has done a whole lot of work on it. Ultimately, their recommendation last night, based on, you know, based on a 6-1 split, there was one commissioner who voted against it based on procedural grounds, as they explained to me after the meeting. But they've, they've recommended that you take and adopt these documents as they are modified here. And so you're going to have the opportunity over the course of the next couple of months to really dig into the details here. If you have direction tonight, if you want to go through deliberations and provide direction, we're happy to take that. But you're going to have lots of opportunity between now and when you have your first opportunity to adopt these documents, to really dig into these changes and, you know, explore them and, and make further recommendations. With that, I guess I will mention that we have a public hearing noticed for your May 29 special meeting, which would be, unless you schedule other meetings, your first opportunity to really dig into these documents in, in depth, and have that be part of the, the approval process. Because of the limitations on adopting resolutions and ordinance, introducing ordinances at special meetings, your first opportunity to really take action will be July 17. So with that, be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Certainly want to hear from the public and, and hear any direction that you might give.
All right. Thank you for that. All right. Before I take it back to the council, I just want to take a minute to really thank the Planning Commission. I know they've been working extremely hard on this and have done a lot of deep diving into this that I really appreciate. I have not yet gotten a chance to watch the Planning Commission meeting, so I really look forward to that. Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for all the work that you have done as well. And I will turn it over to the council for questions. Let's remember to keep it high level. We're not going to talk about Gateway tonight, we don't have a quorum for that, so.
Yeah, I just was gonna see if you could give me a little bit more clarification. When the Planning Commission voted five to one with Dan being absent and Abby saying that she was against the recommending the certification of the EIR, or the Environmental Impact Report, you said it was on procedural grounds. Can you tell me a little bit more what that was about?
There was, the, the conversation that I had with Commissioner Strickland after the, the meeting was that she was anticipating another period of deliberations and discussion and had a few, what she described as minor changes. She characterized them as, you know, dramatical and spelling corrections that she had. I don't want to characterize this as, as fully conveying her concerns. We had just a brief conversation. But she, she told me after the fact, she didn't have significant concerns about the documents or the, the EIR, but that she was just caught off guard on procedural grounds and, and ultimately voted no because of that.
Thank you for clarifying that. Also, just on the EIR, it came out only four days ago, so I'm assuming that many people have not had an opportunity to review that, and I'm wondering if we might give more time for that? I mean, when is, when do we, we're not doing that tonight.
Yeah, tonight, the EIR is not on the agenda. I'm, I'm happy, I mean, it's related, I'm happy to answer questions about it. I do want to be cautious, though, because the EIR discusses the Gateway Area Plan, and so, you know, we'd, we'd want to be careful with those, those conversations.
Okay.
And there, there is additional time. The Planning Commission made its recommendation, but the city council is the decision-making body that will certify that document. And so again, you'll have your May 29 meeting to really dig into detail about it. And then your July 17 would be the first opportunity that you'd have to certify.
Okay. And also, I did want to ask a few questions about policy AQ-1B, which is the air quality of being able to replace. I know that we changed it from new to existing, and I guess I do have a problem with that. I, I'm not for, I mean, obviously I want to improve our air quality, but it seems like it's going to affect poor people. Socioeconomically, those on lower on the totem pole are going to not be able to afford. Like, if I currently had a wood stove and it went out, I might not be able to afford to put in solar or other alternatives. So that's my issue, is unless we make a way to level the playing fields for those who cannot afford something else other than replacing the existing wood stove or, you know, wood burning heating, that we should wait on that, until the city has the ability to either make grants available for solar, or putting in a forced air heating, or some other way to heat homes. And then also-
Can we give David a chance?
Sure, yes.
Yeah, I mean, it's really a policy decision. I think that's what staff pointed out when the Planning Commission brought it up, and certainly, you know, would love to hear from the other councilmembers.
Okay, thank you. And-
Can we, can we stick on that one?
Absolutely, let's stick on it, yeah.
Yeah, because I have, I have a short list of things, too, and that was one of mine, Councilmember White. So yeah, I would love to talk about that. And I just, I, I agree with you. I, people, I feel like people need options, and especially, I know that this is the direction that we are eventually heading, but we're not, you know, we're not quite there yet, and I think that people need options. And so I do specifically have a problem with not being able to replace them. If that's the, you know, if somebody is only heating their house with a wood stove, replacing that could be very expensive and, you know, and might not be possible.
Yeah, I'm okay with striking the including replacement, absolutely. I just- Yeah, I'm okay with striking the including replacement. Absolutely. I just, this has gone through, did the Energy Committee have a recommendation on this? I'm assuming that, no?
This came way after the Energy Committee looked at.
I don't think it needs, I don't think we need to go back to that. I'm fine with striking that including replacement.
Well, one of the things is that wood costs money and it's not an inexpensive thing. And we used to heat our house with wood and you had to buy it and have it, you know, either you split it yourself. You know, they've always said about wood, you get hot twice. First is when you get it, you get to split it and stack it. You get hot when you burn it. That's your second chance. So, you know, I think about that, you know, somebody that had to replace their wood stove, they aren't going to go to solar, you know, because solar is a whole different ballgame right now. And I would think there would be some other, some other means. But I understand pollution and I am serving on the air quality control board and they are constantly talking about what's going on with some of the facilities that we have that are putting on all these qual, you know, little different particles and how they get in your lungs and bad for children, et cetera, et cetera. So I probably am not willing to strike it.
So I concur with you that all of those reasons are very important for air quality. I do want to point out that people are on a budget or more likely to be able to afford to buy a cord of wood every month than to put out an entire heating system. Not everybody has that ability.
And I feel like some places that give seniors like wood, I think you can get wood vouchers.
RCA does that, I believe. RCA, right. Sorry. Thank you. Yeah. So and then also, I wanted to, I know you said new construction. We were speaking about striking for replacement. But I'm thinking that, you know, with PG&E right now and how much rates are going, I've talked to folks that are living now in my community, which, you know, are of less means, thinking that they might want to put in a wood stove. So now that's going to eliminate that for them. It's not new construction, but it is putting, it's not replacing, it's putting it in for the first time.
Well, I'm okay with striking the including replacement, but I think installation of new, I think we should keep that off.
Darn, because that was on my to-do list for my place.
All right. Do we have, I mean, so should we like vote on striking that?
No, I think I got, I got the, I counted the straw pulling. This, and I just want to point out that this exclusive including replacement is the existing policy. So our current policy does not allow new installation, I'm sorry, does not allow, yeah, remodel, addition, or new construction to have installation.
Yeah. Okay. And so I'm fine. So I think we're all okay, except for perhaps Vice Mayor Stillman with striking the including replacement.
We'll get there.
Yeah, it's okay. I'm only one person.
So page 52 CM5E, I was just wanting to see if you could explain that just a little bit for those who maybe need a little more information. So it's the language change to emphasize existing trails should be expanded, require standards for moving a trail. And it looks like what was decided by staff that they were neutral or reject it because it was unnecessary. And it was approved by the Planning Commission, five to zero, but I would love to talk about it because it, the three polls that were taken were add more miles of Class 1, no net loss, and then name the L Street section of the trail in the policy, which number three for me is important in particular.
I'm sorry, I lost the thread for the question.
I don't know, but I think, I think we're going to hold off on talking about L Street until we talk about.
Oh, yeah. Sorry.
But look at number seven on the screen and see if that captures what you were hoping to capture.
I think it does.
I think overall, the concept here was that the, the commission and, and, you know, many public members wanted to ensure that there was a no net loss policy. And so we incorporated that. I think that was certainly the the intent. And so that that was incorporated. There may be, we don't know, you know, what will happen in the future. There's no plans right now to move any trails. But if a trail does get moved, this policy now ensures that the connectivity that that trail provided will remain and the number, you know, the miles of trail will not go down as a result of that change.
So, so that's no net loss. So help me understand that. We don't know what's happening in the future, so there's no protection, then it seems to me, for that particular L Street section of the trail.
Well, I mean, yeah, whichever trail it is, let's say that there's a project that comes through that, you know, that has, let's say it's the the CAP project, you know, that comes through. And because of that project, we have to move a trail. What this policy says, and I have every confidence that, you know, this council, future councils would say, well, we want more trails to go in anyway. But what this policy does is it makes it very explicit that if you're going to have a project that has an impact on trails, you're going to replace them. You're not going to lose them, you're going to replace them. So wherever that happens.
So, and I do understand that no net loss. Okay. But as pointed out by Alex, is that we need to wait on that because that's in.
But I think the policy of no net loss means no net loss. And so you aren't going to all of a sudden make, oh, we had 10 miles of trail and now we're going to drop it and we're not going to replace that 10 miles.
No, I understand that there's no net loss. What I, what I'm concerned about is that that particular trail in itself, I'd like it to be named as not being able to. But but again, we're talking, so I'm going to move on to page 53 LU1N, take a more cautious approach to development in South G Street area to avoid developing in areas subject to sea level rise. And this was rejected by staff. This is based on council direction from multiple councils. There are other policy that regulates this, the local coastal program. And it was recommended by the Planning Commission to not make the change, but then the Planning Commission approved it three to two, which to me seems, it was pretty close.
Can you read the policy number again?
LU1N is in Nancy and it's in packet page 53. I mean, if it was a six to zero or even a five to zero, but but it is, was pretty close. We had three to two. So I'm hoping that we can have some discussion about that.
And so, Councilmember White, are you, are you wanting us to discuss just in the description, like whether we agree that we should take a more cautious approach?
Yes.
Or not agree? Okay.
Yes. Thank you.
Did you have suggested language change for this?
I'm sorry. And I think the the policy number might have changed. Can you tell me what the name of the policy is?
All I see is LU1-1N is in Nancy. It's on page 53 of our packet. And it says, take a more cautious approach to development in South G area to avoid developing in areas subject to sea level rise. And again, we're talking about socioeconomics. Folks that live in South G do not have, they're poor. So they're the ones that are going to be hit the most. So I just want to protect these folks.
Well, not everyone. Marsh Commons is down there. They are not for.
Yeah, I think the, the issues that were raised relative to this one, it is LU1N, you see on the the screen here. As stated in the policy, those types of concerns are housed in the city's local coastal program. And so, you know, policies around, you know, sea level rise adaptation should all be housed together in one place. So you're not like hunting and pecking all over, number one. And number two, so that you don't have, you know, you don't lose the thread. In terms of the approach that was proposed in that change, and I know you're just looking at a synopsis here.
Yeah.
The actual language of the change was a pretty significant departure from direction that we've received over the course of the last literally 10 years, 12 years on local coastal policy. So I didn't want to insert something into the land use element that was in conflict with the body of policy that we've been working on with the local coastal program.
And you're talking 10 to 12 years ago. A lot of things have changed within.
Over the course of the last 10 to 12 years, consistent policy recommendation.
Okay. So what you're saying is that this, this cautious approach is addressed within the local coastal program, which we will be updating. And so we can address it there if needed.
I believe that's the appropriate place to address it.
Okay.
Well, my, my recollections of previous discussions and let's be very simple terms, so you can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong. But I believe that we have talked about trying to take a middle-of-the-road approach, because there are some people that just feel like a full retreat should be happening. And I think that's not what we've said, just to recognize that there is a lot going on there. But when building new things, that there has to be a cautious approach and we're limited to the new things that we could build in that area. Is that correct?
Yeah, I would love to go into a lot more detail when we talk about the local coastal program on this. I mean, I think there's, you know, because there's a lot to it. And, you know, I think that's, that's a close approximation to what the current local coastal element says. And I, you know, I'd be happy to bring that that element back at one of our intervening meetings before you, you know, adopt this.
And wasn't there some discussion of if there was things like, you know, mobile homes, things that can be moved and easier, you know, as opposed to new building or businesses? Did I just pull that out of a hat?
Just, I mean, just in brief, one of the, you know, sort of the central theme to our adaptation planning is to try and encourage investment in the areas that are in the mapped vulnerable zone that are already currently developed. So not allowing for higher density of development in areas that are, you know, you know, on the bottom lands, for example, that are vulnerable. But in the area of South G and H Street where you have already existing development, to encourage reinvestment in those properties so that you can transition them away from their current uses, like think of all the salvage yards and scrap yards and that sort of thing. Transition them away from those uses into new uses that would clean those sites so that when sea level rise does happen, you don't have these contaminated sites that are now leaching into the bay. And so we actually want to incentivize development in that area in the near term, recognizing that, you know, you're going to, at some point, likely need to, you know, divest of that area and remove that that infrastructure.
So like an RV park could.
RV park is a perfect example, is the prime example. If we could get, you know, the scrapyard to turn into an RV park, that's a really low investment option for cleaning the site that, you know, then is also easy to to adapt to. But it's, that's sort of like the prime example. We can't have RV park after RV park, you know? We're going to have different uses down there. And if someone comes in and says, hey, I want to build a building, you know, current policy direction and my recommendation would be to say, yes, build a building on this scrapyard site, clean it up, turn it into a hotel or whatever, and then you'll get your land use out of it. There's also policy in the local coastal element that, that we would, you know, record land use covenants on title so that they're acknowledging and any future buyer would be acknowledging through the purchase of that property that they're in a vulnerable area and may have to demolish their building and remove it in the future.
Wouldn't that affect insurance? I mean, who's going to ensure something knowing that sea level rise is coming? And I also, I agree. I like the idea of hotels and tourist industry, just before I forget that notion. But then I am thinking of how, who would be willing, I mean, it seems like it might not. Who's going to ensure that?
Yeah. I think there is a lot of questions about what insurance is going to look like in the next 20 years, specific to climate change nationwide. So again, you're going to try to create policy that you think would best move certain areas of this community forward in the vision that the community has expressed to you that they'd like to see. And some of those might or might not be hard to ensure. But I mean, I think residential structures nationwide are struggling to get homeowners insurance right now. So yeah, I think we could see a real change in what that industry looks like.
Even if they're not within the coastal zone, they are struggling. The same with commercial. But one of the things that you look at, too, is that the life of a building that's built, and so you know your life of a building is not going to be 100 years. If it's historic, ready, redwood, maybe you'll get 100 years or something out of it. A new construction, you're probably are being looked at maybe 30 years. And then you're going to want to replace it or update it or something. And that's a change that can happen. And that's what I've been told by contractors.
And it will coincide with the slow, measured retreat that we are wanting to do.
Okay. Let's go Stacy, a chance.
So I think that we're all on the same page, if I'm reading this correctly, that staff recommended to reject that. The decision was, you know, to not make that change. And it sounds like that's what we're also agreeing upon here. So does that resonate with everyone?
I guess I would want to go back and watch the Planning Commission to find out why two of the three or of five did not approve it. So it was a three to two. So just barely passed.
Stacy, do you want to talk about it? Is there another point you want to bring up?
Um, yes. So on regarding the word tenement housing, I, that didn't sit well with me when I read it. So I thought, well, maybe there's more to this. And so, you know, I did a quick Google search and nothing immediately positive popped up. I just, I don't, I did not watch that Planning Commission meeting, but I'm just, I don't know why the, why we're putting the word tenement housing in there. I don't think that's a good term to use. It's, I mean, we're encouraging apartments. If there was some type of a co-op that wanted to happen, I'm sure we support that. But I have a problem with that word.
Any, any discussion on, on that one?
I concur. Thank you.
Yeah, we can strike that.
So how did, what was the interpretation for a tenement? Why, why we did, was it used originally?
Do you know?
I think that the recommendation came forward as a measure to allow for a range of different types of housing, you know, styles. And so I think that the concept here was to try and get, you know, affordable housing. And, you know, I think we already have policy that, you know, leans into affordable housing, you know, co-ops, a range of different housing situations. I don't think we lose the ability to have creativity when it comes to housing types by removing the word tenement from that, that policy. So we would support it. I think staff did not support the, the change to start with.
Well, I think everyone thinks about tenement housing and they think about New York City and what happened in New York City and how they took away so much for the opera, the ballet, that whole thing was removing all the tenement housing.
You know, if you look in the, tenement housing is single family dwellings divided into multiple living spaces. And it means, you know, rooms with no windows, poor ventilation. The properties are overcrowded, lacked indoor plumbing. So just that whole term was like we, that's not how we want to represent any part of Arcata or any demographic.
So I did have a, I had another one from a construction standpoint. It was D1A. It says, include environmentally friendly materials as a requirement. Staff did not support that, but the Planning Commission did decide to do that. And although I think that that's a great goal and choice, I think that that could, you know, depending on how much what our requirements are. But first of all, environmentally friendly, that is a vague term and could be very, it could be really debated. It could actually, you know, in an extreme term, cause construction to come to a halt if we're trying to suss out what is environmentally friendly. So I, I just personally have a problem with that recommendation.
And I concur. I think that there's a way that we can reward those who do environmentally conscious materials, but to do that, you know, conscious materials, but to do that, you know, with construction right now and how expensive it is, we don't want to do anything to impede housing being built, especially that we have such a housing crutch nationwide. But, you know, Arcata, big time.
Yeah, that was a really non-specific term that probably should be avoided. You know more about construction than I do. So I'm assuming that you know of what you speak.
Well, and just, I think that with the, with issues in supply, you know, there's a really big supply chain issue. Things fluctuate. So I think we just, no matter what we're doing, if we're really going to limit materials, we just need to know that we might really be limiting construction. Um, I have a question mark by this one. I'm Director Loya. So requiring, we talked about it a little bit, but requiring green streets and mid-block alleys. I think that's a great idea, but putting it to actual practical use, I have a question about that. If you could maybe, I know that staff did not support that change, but then the planning commission did vote unanimously to bring it in. So I kind of wanted you to give us your opinion.
Um, yeah, the, the mid-block alleys and green streets, I think was an idea to try and, you know, just add more green spaces, to add more, you know, kind of Wooner concept. And this is, this is one where we don't have any, you know, specifically planned at this point. But I think that, and I'm not sure exactly where this would necessarily apply. But I, I do think, and I would defer to, you know, environmental services on, you know, in terms of, you know, developing more of what is essentially park space to maintain. In particular, when we have, you know, quite a bit of park space. And in some of our other areas where we're planning for higher densities of development, we're planning in concepts like, you know, privately held, you know, open space. So in the infill opportunity zones, you will, you know, likely see more of these kinds of spaces incorporated in, in the zoning requirements. And so I guess, you know, there is, there's a trade-off. I think we all want to see, you know, more green space. We all love to see open space. And I think it's just, you know, the, the constant balance between whether we have more active uses where you have businesses and homes, you know, in these infill areas. And, and the whole point of that is to preserve the open spaces that we have around us, or whether you want to, you know, create, you know, more of these spaces internal and, and in addition to the spaces that we're already creating internally. So I think that's why the staff recommendation initially was, you know, not, not to support that. But it is, you know, you know, it's certainly nice to have a Wooner.
I, I support the sentiment. I guess my concern is that developer would probably just choose parks in lieu. And then it's going to defeat the purpose in particular areas that we can't talk about. That the intention was to bring these to walkable, make the, the community walkable neighborhood. And so the parks can just, it just goes into a fund, is my understanding. And we could put them somewhere else, not where they intended. I, that, does that make any sense? So if, if a developer has to do this, they may choose Park and Lou, and then there's not going to be a park because it may turn out that we expand in Redwood Park and we don't put the park where it was originally where the developer is, and it's not going to support that particular community that it had intended to support. So we could have a particular area that doesn't have green spaces and parks.
Well, and I think to me, it says require it. So it doesn't seem to me that it would be a choice, like, you know, for a developer. Then that's why I wanted to talk about it with all of you, because I think what you're talking about is like choices, you know, and the, and I don't think this gives a choice. It says require green streets and mid-block alleys. It's not a, it doesn't come across as a community benefit.
And I, I think we're mixing two comments. I think this particular policy requiring green streets and mid-block alleys is separate from what you would consider parkland dedication or Park and Lou fees. And what I would say is, yes, there are times that Park and Lou fees that are paid, let's say in the Westwood neighborhood, might go to a regional park, Larson Park, Redwood Park, Arcata Ballpark. But we do really work hard to try to specifically look at, is there a neighborhood that's being impacted by that development? For example, we just did the park on Zedner this year, and that was with, with Park and Lou funds predominantly that were from construction in that region. So that's the first place that we look for. And we certainly could make a dedication around, you know, certain types of Park and Lou fees that are paid in a specific area of the plan for a specific. I think the recommendation for staff to reject this was really simply came down to, can the city maintain this over time? You see what Samoa Boulevard landscaping looks like? You see what the bulbouts that try, we try to maintain landscaping look like? I mean, the reality, I'm not saying this proudly, I'm just saying the reality is we don't have the maintenance staff to get to that level of detail in Arcata. So absent of private property owners adopting or being required to maintain those, you know, our fear at a staff level, I think, is that they're just not going to be maintained to a standard that really is adequate to showcase the city.
The other distinction I want to make too here is that with these infill opportunity zones, you know, they all have sort of different characteristics, but a lot of the times we're taking, you know, an area that has been used in one, one land use type for a long time and has, you know, developed, you know, you know, set of streets and already is park deficient. And so through the, you know, through the planning process, we're identifying certain areas where there have to be parks. And so within those areas, you would not be able to do an in-lu. The Park and Lou fee is, is associated strictly with subdivision. With, with these sites, we're saying these are where the, the public spaces are going to be. And furthermore, they're going to be private public spaces, you know, privately held, publicly accessible, open spaces. So kind of creating those park spaces and transferring the burden, burden of maintenance and ownership to that private landowner. So this, this mid-block park idea or mid-block green alley idea is just an additional requirement for, for privately held or maybe publicly held open space. It's, it's hard to tell at this point where those would be held.
I just want to say in Visage subdivision, they actually have a connector between one area, between one horseshoe and to another, where it goes between houses and it's a walkway and it just goes around. And then it gets over, you get over to another street. And I would think those are kinds of things we're going to want to look at in the future when we have new development is how can, well, an example is the open door clinic, how you can get from Sunset over to the ball field. And so I think how you can get these ways and that one is, you know, it's concrete, but there's a lot of vegetation. And I, I would hope that we'd see those kind of connections and that you could take your bike or you could walk. And it's not a roadway. It's a sidewalk, walkway. It's a good idea that they have any.
It's great. I live in that area. I love it. Our walkways. Does everybody feel comfortable if we pause for a minute and take some public comment? Fabulous. Let's do.
Okay with the mayor, I'd like to cede my time to Fred Weiss.
No.
Okay. I will take a shot at it instead. There, there, one of the issues that, I mean, I don't have, I don't have the actual number here, but it had to do with the air quality, which came out as very significant. So one thing in the, in the policy that was significant, it was a, I think it was a comment that Matt made, that he was like not comfortable with that designation from the standpoint, he felt that, you know, with what was going on with vehicles in the future. And I have to say that, you know, I'm totally support of that idea, but what I see from the standpoint of where I live, like, let's take the high school, for example, the yellow buses that are going by, there's only a few students on those buses. I mean, you should get data on that. That'd be interesting to see. I see lots of parents that are driving their kids to school. I see lots of kids driving to school. I go by the parking lot. It's a huge, it's probably the biggest parking lot in town and it is just full of cars. And it's so rare to actually see someone riding a bicycle. I mean, I think I saw once when they were riding on the sidewalk. I mean, there is a bicycle lane there on H. And so I'm just totally disagreeing with his assessment that, that this isn't significant. It is significant. And unfortunately, I totally, I'm totally support the goals, but it isn't happening. You know, it's like you got some nice, beautiful bicycle lanes. It's pretty rare to actually somebody riding in the bicycle lane. So from the standpoint of the air quality too, maybe Alex could check into it. I didn't even realize she was on the air quality board, but we seem to have exemption for Humboldt County. I'm just really confused. I see about 30% maybe vehicles. I'm not talking about big semi trucks delivering food, but I'm talking about pickup trucks that are all diesel and you see a lot of black smoke coming out of them. And they're also really noisy too. Why are we actually exempt in Humboldt County from that? Because if we were in most of the counties in California, those vehicles would be going through a smog test and I don't think they would pass. So, I mean, you've been talking about the wood burning aspect. That's something that happens year round all the time. And I don't think that that's seriously, that's part of our safety element too, along with the noise. But there is, there's just something not quite right about how we have this environment goals and that what I actually see visually happening throughout the city is not matching that at all. So, you know, take a look at that one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, council. I have a lot to say. I'm sure a lot of it would be better expressed in writing, which I'd be happy to do. The, first, I wanted to thank the council and express my appreciation to the planning commission for all their work. I think we're 97% done and I want to get sure that the last remaining part is done well. I'm going to skip around a bit. I'm sure you can follow me. The tenement situation as council member, Akon Salazar brought up, that caught me too. And it's almost impossible to find on Google or doing a search. I have found what it means. That was not what the planning commission said. That was a word that was introduced. It's actually a good concept. I'll write you more about this. It just, it means apartments that have shared kitchens and shared bathrooms. It doesn't mean 1910 New York City style tenements. It's a core choice of words, but I think that the policy should stay in. So we'll, we'll discuss that later. In terms of the table that you have, there's 43 items in the table. As the director mentioned, some are missing, including some important ones. There's at least 10 that are wrong in some fashion. One thing is that often the descriptions don't match the policies. Okay? I'm preparing a table. I'll send it to you. There are small changes, but you may not be able to understand what is actually going on from the description that's here. The, in terms of the, as the director said, it's expensive to redo the maps. So they have to be done, be better to be done just once. Then there should be text that alerts us what the changes will be. So that, so that we know and so that it gets done. The, at the meeting last night, there was a small error in Rosenberg's rules. There was no comment after the motion and second. The, let's see here. The, there's no inclusionary zoning yet. That will be added, we're told. The Craftsman Mall zoning situation, that was one of my errors, which I apologize for. It was wrong on the 1213 version, and it wasn't done as a track change and it's not shown as an RM on the drawing. Every other RM is shown there. Let's see. Again, having this more in writing is probably more fruitful because there, there's, it's just a lot of details at this point to get things right. And as I've expressed, this is not, I'm not trying to put my two cents into it. This is thing, these are things that the commission and the council have expressed. We want to make sure it's in the document. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anybody else have public comment on this? All right, anyone on Zoom?
We do. Our first one, just as an iPhone. Go ahead, iPhone user.
Oh, hi, to council and staff. This is Jim Becker. And I wanted to speak to you a little bit about the policy CM 5E7. And I think there's a little bit of confusion on that policy because it is actually in the general plan. So presently, this would be the time to discuss it. It was originally addressed in GA policy GA 7I, but was deleted and moved over to the general plan. So I think if this was to be discussed later, I think it needs to be clarified that the policy can be brought back up. And, you know, presently the whole, it's a bit of a game of whack-a-mole. There's also within the, a little bit of the conversation, within the form-based codes, there's also a, a discussion about when a, a master plan is, is completed, it allows an applicant at that point in time. It's not quite as clear, but also to, with connectivity to move a trail. And I, I, I think it deserves maybe a little more time to be discussed. You know, I mean, back, I think it was in a joint study session. It might've been 2023 in July and it was a time when, first time planning commission got together with the city council and Todd Trienza had an image that showed everything would fit, including the path. And there was promises back then that, you know, the path would stay under any circumstances. There'd be a road, there'd be a little strip of grass. And, and I just want to keep in mind that now the conversation's about that it might be okay to move the trail. And so what I would just ask is if CM 5E7 might be considered to be discussed further and not necessarily approved as is. And that's what I'd have to say for now. And thank you for everything you're doing.
Thank you, Jim.
All right, our next speaker is Sherry. Go ahead, Sherry.
Hi, good evening. Also speaking on CM 5E7, the Creamery District goes hand in hand with the L Street corridor rails with trails, bike and pedestrian path. And people have been speaking on the topic of the L Street corridor for at least two years. Over 1,200 people signed a petition to protect the pedestrian and bike path on L Street and to create a linear park along L Street that stretches to Samoa Boulevard. The city council heard the people and asked that the corridor be protected. The petition did not call for a no net loss policy that would allow the zoning administrator to move the L Street path to some other location at will, with no right of review by the public and with no input from the planning commission or the city council. In the final version of the general plan, please make sure that the L Street corridor is protected and not left vulnerable. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sherry.
All right, our next speaker is Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa. Go ahead, Lisa. Yep.
Hi. Good evening, council members. Since the initiation of this general plan update, we have seen two recent developments that represent the new Arcata that will likely replicate if the plan as written is approved without some finer tuning. The now seven-story building on the Craftsman Mall, we see what height and mass looks like in Arcata. And it may suggest that we need to think out all of this just a little bit more, how the new general plan's allowable building heights and masses will or will not work within our community. Another example is the recently approved demolition of a perfectly usable home on Jane's Road in order to make way for what I believe will become a fourplex. While it could be argued that this is just fine for this particular location, how this will translate in other areas of town is something we need to think about. What makes this demolition and reconstruction possible is primarily the existing current underlying zoning, coupled with a streamlined review process, limiting community character, neighborhood consistency determinations, or historic structure evaluations. Key components of a review process that has up to now helped to sustain the character of the town, which I think we all would agree is important. The current version of the new plan has an implementation measure LU-9 to consider rezoning current RL neighborhoods such as Bayview, Northtown, Arcata Heights, and Sunset Neighborhoods to allow for more housing and mixed uses. We need to think about how upzoning from RL to RM or RH and increased building heights and masses coupled with this streamlined process will affect Arcata's treasured neighborhoods and whether or not or not it is unwise to include this implementation measure in the general plan at this time. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, we have another call-in user. Call-in user number two. Go ahead.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Good evening. This is Craig Johnson calling, Arcata resident. And I just want to echo what the last caller said. And think about what is the most beautiful neighborhood in San Francisco? Inner sunset. No building over two stories. You can see the sunshine down every street. There's not long shadows casted across one person's building and another person engaging or enjoying the sun. It's everyone's equal. Everyone's the same height, and it's a beautiful zone. And and I bring that up because really, look at the new shadows that are casted across our city. Do we want to live in the shadows, or do we all want to enjoy the sunshine when it does come out in Arcata? So consider that. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have no other online public comment.
Okay, so this is where I am at right now. I think that I really appreciated that update from you. I have this huge tome in front of me with track changes that I'm really looking forward to digging into. I'm interested in watching the Planning Commission meeting. I know that I have several meetings that I have had and that I have set up with members of the community to talk more about this. I would like to kind of pause and go back and look at and do and and kind of consider what we've heard tonight and look over what Planning Commission recommended and read through this a little bit more and then come back on the 29th, unless anybody else has anything else that they feel like they need to. I'm comfortable with the recommendations that we made tonight. And if those were the the small sticking points that the Planning Commission had, I'm glad we addressed those. But but I do want to dig a little deeper.
Well, there was only one, and that was the car-free zone for downtown Arcata, the plaza. And that was in red. And I'm assuming that there's our people in our community that would like to see that happen. And just knowing what's going on right now, I think it would be very detrimental.
Well, that's one of the ones that I saw, too. And what I wanted to make sure is that it said consider or like the possibility of, because I don't want it to seem like, you know, this is planning for the next 20 years. And there could be a time in the future where we do have the population to support that, and it makes sense. So I think it's fine to have that as a goal. But if it were to say it was happening right now, I wouldn't I would share your feeling that it's we're not there yet. But I'm okay with it because it says consider.
Yeah, that's where I'm at with that, too.
So and possibly within the next 20 years, we'll have a lot of buildings removed that are on the plaza, and they'll be built up to, you know, five, six stories. And then we would have a population base to be able to support that kind of retail.
Kimberly, have any final words?
I just want to say that I concur with you, Mayor. And I would like to have a little more time to digest this after hearing public comment and maybe going through one more time with a fine-tooth comb in the detail and and probably watch the Planning Commission meeting again.
Yeah, it's unfortunate. It was like last night, because I haven't had a chance to watch it yet. But and again, I appreciate all the hard work that everybody has done. I appreciate all the input that we've gotten. I've appreciated all the work that certain, you know, people really are invested in this. And I really appreciate this. I know that this is Arcata for all of us, and we all have to live here. So I really appreciate like all the thought and time and consideration that people are putting into this. This is a big, you know, thing to tackle, and we are going to make sure that we do it right. It's, you know, we've got months ahead of us. Nobody's like, you know, we're not sprinting. I mean, I can't sprint anyway.
I was just going to say, even in the past, in the past 20 years, the general plan, there are things in that that still have not happened. Just so you know that not everything happens in 20 years. It could maybe be 40, maybe never. But but all we're asked to do is staff recommendations to the Council, consider changes to the general plan 2045 update that have been proposed since the draft. And so we've done that.
I feel comfortable moving on. Community Development Director lawyers, anything else you want to add? Is there anything else you need from us? Did we give you kind of what you needed?
Yeah, no, thank you.
All right. All right. Let's move. Let's move on.
Are we going to have our attorney online?
Let's take it. Your attorney is online, yes. Does anybody need to take?
Okay, good. They can look at him on both monitors.
Wonderful. Does anybody need to take a little break before we move on to the protocol manual?
Might as well.
All right, let's take a let's come back at eight. All right, let's bring it back. Okay, and we are at item C, Consider Revisions to the City Official's Protocol Manual 2024. And we have our attorneys on the line. And let us have a staff report from him.
We do. I'm going to open it. And then Doug, feel free to jump in on things that I've overlooked. So what is before you tonight, actually, at your April 3 meeting, you went over in detail with the city attorney, proposed changes to the protocol manual. At that meeting, the Council gave staff direction to accept many of those changes, but did also request a few additional changes be considered and a few additional things be outlined in the manual. So what's before you tonight has accepted all the track changes that you approved during your April 3 meeting. And then we have attempted to to try to capture additional changes in track changes of what is before you tonight. So truthfully, they're not overly substantial or substantive. Mostly, it is grammatical corrections or some some minor changes associated with making sure that you're consistent with the municipal code under the disaster preparedness section. The Council asked specifically for language that just generally outlines what the process is if a council member were to vacate their seat earlier than their term. So we added some language in around that. And then we took out all the acronyms, thanks to some support from the from the community and editing and going through and just trying to streamline some of the language throughout. So, I mean, I Doug White, your city attorney, is also online. If there were any other substantive changes that you wanted to speak to, Doug, please do. If not, I think we are here and available to answer questions.
All right. I have read through this, and let's take it to the Council. Does anybody have any comments?
I have one. The only thing is, I did read this on my phone, so I wasn't able to go back and figure out where it was. But somewhere in there, it says that we have the Chamber of Commerce and the Film Commission, and that we work with them. And I don't know where that is, but it's in there somewhere.
I didn't see it.
You didn't see it?
I mean, I read the whole. I read the whole thing.
So did I.
Pretty.
They were in parentheses. And so my feeling was, is it possibly we should put in that we have the Arcata Playhouse is our arts arts organization?
So we have advisory bodies and civic organization. Yep. Yep, I would be happy to add.
I was thinking that we have an arts organization that's advising us and putting out different things.
Oh, that's a great idea, Alex.
Possibly we should add them.
Thank you. That was excellent catch.
On your phone, no less.
I'm pretty happy with the way the protocol manual reads. I don't really have anything to add, so.
I feel like we talked about it for a long time during that meeting and really came up with the changes that we wanted, and they're in there. So I'm happy with it.
Now, this is the only one I had.
Sorry. So I had a couple folks contact me, a constituent. What they said was that we changed the title of the protocol, but there wasn't a lot of attention paid to the individual committees and commissions, and that they were hoping that perhaps there could be some separate rules when it's appropriate, because, for example, seating of time in the City Council meeting might make sense. But the Planning Commission meetings are often not highly attended. We don't usually have our City Hall filled. And so they were wanting to see if that could be implemented in there for commissions and committees as a possibility. And let's see, I was.
I don't know. I think leaving things as broad and general as possible is probably the best and leaving it up to whomever is chairing the meeting at the time.
So so basically, what they brought up was that on the, you know, San Diego, Santa Cruz allows this, the FPPCs allows this, the Coastal Commission allows the seating of the time. And while it might not make sense during a city council meeting, it might make sense, would be at the discretion of the chair or of the committees and commissions, that maybe we could add that.
I can share with you, your city attorney and I are probably going to have slightly different answers. Do you want to go first, Doug?
Do you want to?
Or do you want to hear mine first?
Go ahead.
So and I think we have been trying to build in the beginning of consistency between, you know, kind of council setting the standard and committees and commissions can look to this manual for guidance as necessary. We are in the process of revamping the Commission Committee Handbook. The intent of that is to have a much lighter document, more reflective of being appreciative of the volunteer service they're providing, more background information about the city, how our operations flow, how their committee work fits into the overall structure, which you, as a council, fully understand. So the look and feel of that will be very different than kind of the dense material of your protocol manual. What I have shared with people that have, you know, asked questions around this level is that to the extent that the Commission Committee Handbook nor the Arcata Municipal Code doesn't provide guidance if a specific situation were to come up, the next place that I would go, if there was a question from a committee, would be the Council Protocol Manual to seek some consistency with that. So to that extent, this could set a standard that committees could follow. But we are also looking at sort of revamping that Committee Handbook. You'll have a chance to create a different set of rules, should you choose to do that at that time. But I don't, you know, at this point, I don't know exactly what those would look like.
So that is a possibility, that there could be a separate set of rules for that particular issue or other issues.
We do already have a handbook for committees that outlines some of that.
Right.
And that would obviously be a council choice. But I do want to preface, and we'll give Doug a chance, is I think the intent of this was also to streamline and try to pull together as much standardization, because we saw pretty disparate, I'll say, ways of processing, say, the general plan, as it went through all of the different committees. So we have this last two years had a lot of committee chairs seeking advice from the Council and looking for some sort of standard protocol that they would follow to try to have more consistency between committees. And I think that was one of the goals that your new city attorney set out to address, that he had heard in the beginning as well. But Doug, do you want to speak to that?
Could I just clarify? I thought we were getting rid of the Committee Commission Handbook, but we're not. We're just going to make it lighter and.
It may be an ultimate goal. I think that this is one step potentially towards that. I don't think that it brings us there completely. And I do think there is a lot of different type of information in a committee handbook that would be very helpful to committees that would not necessarily be appropriate in the protocol manual. So once you see those. So once you see those both in front of you, then I think it's gonna be easier for the city attorney to say, here's what I think we could pour into the protocol manual, if you want to try to do this as one. I don't think we're quite there yet. But to the extent that nothing, that the municipal code and the handbook that the committees use do not address the situation, I would turn to the protocol manual of the council to provide guidance. But go ahead, Doug.
Yeah, and if I could, I think one of the goals of this is to have, I think, as the city manager said, is to have consistency, so you have the same experience when you go to any committee. But more so, there really won't be a need for seating of time, because the way the rule works is if somebody wants more time, they just ask the chair, and either the chair can grant it, or a majority of that board sitting can grant the extra time. One of the things that we do want to do is we want to make sure that whoever's running the meeting still has the ability to kind of get the city's business done. And so you can imagine, it's an exaggerated experience, but you could have a situation where you have 10 people come in, they seat all their time to one person, and maybe that becomes, you know, obstructive to being able to get the agenda done for that night. That being said, if that same person who, in my example that I gave before, asked the chair for more time, and, you know, or the board of the chair didn't want to give it, they would be able to give the appropriate amount of time to do it, consistent with the ability to run an orderly meeting. So that's the goal, having a consistent experience, so people know what to expect. They don't get different experiences in different committees from a procedural standpoint, so they have an expectation of the time that they can speak. But more importantly, just knowing that probably seating of time is not necessary, because there's another, probably more efficient mechanism, to be able to address that issue.
So, thank you for that clarification. I was not aware that it would be at the discretion of the chair, and that was a possibility. So thank you for that clarifying.
Did you have any other changes you'd like to make? All right, let's take it out to public comment.
Hi, my name's Joanne McGary, and in all honesty, I haven't had an opportunity to look at this in detail, and it's really in small print, even with these glasses. It's kind of dense. A couple of things I was looking at is what, how things can get, how members of the public can request something be put on the agenda, and once that public member has requested that, what is the protocol in terms of people on the dais, the council members getting it on the agenda? And it looks like two people on the council need to together say, yes, I'm willing to have that put on the agenda, but one council member is the one that has to provide a written notice of why they want that item on the agenda. So I want a little clarification on that. And I didn't see anything about speaking at the beginning of the meeting, the end of the meeting. I want more people to be involved, and, you know, not just the same old people here speaking, but I'm glad we have that opportunity to speak, because we care and having the ability to share what we feel. But if others came in, I'm happy to let them speak ahead of me if there's a timing issue or whatever. But I guess, you know, I have a kind of a question on how to get things on the agenda and how it all kind of works. And the example being the ceasefire resolution, and how difficult it was to understand how to get that on the agenda. And now it looks like it requires two people. At that point, the mayor requested three people. So I would like some clarification about things like that. I'm curious about the proclamations and the need for them to be made available throughout the year, our ceremonial matter proclamations. There's probably a ton of other things in here, but like I say, I just picked this up. Again, this is another thing, I'm grateful that they have this available in the folder, because I just grabbed it now to take a quick look. But it would be really nice if it was available at the library or something, so that people could go to the library before the meeting and, you know, look at it and make copies of it if they needed to or whatever. Because, you know, people like me, I don't have a printer at home, and it's easier for me to read things in hard copy with bigger fonts. But anyway, those are, the agenda items is really the important question I have right now. What's the protocol? Because I'm gonna want things put on the agenda, so I want to know how that happens.
Thank you.
I'll have to say, showing up for two years, no one's ever seated any time to me, and maybe I have to work on having more friends. But I don't, I don't have a problem with someone, the mayor, seating a little bit more time. I mean, there could be examples of, let's say you have an architect, you don't have any architects on the planning commission, what if they were in the audience and you had a subject? You would love to hear what, other than three minutes from them, because they're an expert. Could be somebody on sea level rise that's in the community. So I think it's, I think that's what the attorney is saying, that the mayor has, can make a case-by-case decision on these, and that would be a healthy thing to do. So I agree with that. I mean, I've only, the only time I've ever seen it, in my opinion, being abused a little bit, I think on the planning commission, when we had the Westwood Apartments, you know, I think it was a little out of control, when everyone in the apartments could cede their time to one person, and then that one person got at least like 15 minutes. That was a little out there. And I think the other times were, I mean, it's another judgment call, is when you have these large groups that show up on a different topic, and I'll have to say that when that, when they start seating time there, you already have a large group that you're dealing with. So example, I've seen this with the coastal commission. It was actually when they planned, when they approved the Phase 1 of the wastewater treatment plant, you had Marin, you had Marin County that was before us, and, you know, Marin County, you got a lot of people that are pretty active in the subject matter with coastal commission, and they actually had to, they apologized to the public, but they had to, they had to limit the time, because it went on for hours and hours, there were so many people. So there's different situations where you just gotta be flexible with it. And I think what I've seen here with it, you know, it wasn't a smart move to allow probably people to cede times when you have that size of a group, and they also, I often note, they grab, like, one person shows up and grabs all the cards here, and then, I mean, I'm watching them, they're just kind of like, who wants to talk? And they're kind of like passing them out. So there's a kind of a little etiquette there, that that's not exactly how it works. So that's what I have to say about it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Fred Wise. I appreciate the goals and the intent, what we're doing here, and I will start off by saying that I have no objection to this being passed in its current form, except for one thing. It's called a city official's protocol manual. In no way, shape, or form is this a city official's protocol manual, not yet. It's a city council member, city council protocol manual. Council member or council appears 537 times in this document. It is not a document for committees or commissions. The, eventually, I envision a document that has three sections. One is ethical considerations, Brown Act considerations, the applicable to everybody, a section just for city council protocol, and a section for other committees and commissions protocol. The, I regard that this be in any way viewed as an example for other committees and commissions as just flat-out wrong. There's too many things. There is also things missing in here that I think should be added. One is the circumstances under which public speaking time can be reduced from three minutes to two minutes, and possibly from two minutes to one minute. There's criteria on this, not to have strict guidelines, but to give some indication to future city councils. The, so, in, I looked at a video from 2009, involved the sale of the Zanzig property, where Carlson Park is, and a neighbor spoke at a planning commission meeting. She spoke, she was there for over 30 minutes. The planning commission chair and other planning commissioners asked her questions, the planning commission asked staff questions, went back and forth. It was an actual dialogue, and it was really delightful and refreshing to see the civilized conversation, because a lot got done, you know, in the exchange of information that way. It would be nice to reinstate that sort of thing as a possibility. I, I think I've stated that, in terms of the seating of time, I think on the city council level, I am completely willing to give that up, mainly because it could be abused. I don't think it's been abused yet, in my opinion, but it has a strong possibility. So to sum up my suggestions, absolutely return the name to its prior name, do not have it be an official's manual, be absolutely clear that this is just for the council, it's not for the commission or committees, and keep working on it and come back with all the changes for the future, because it's all good stuff. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone online? All right, I'll bring it back for more discussion or motion.
Well, there is that question, city officials or city council protocol manual? Consider the revisions to the city officials protocol manual, and then below it says section whatever, I don't know. It is the city council's protocol manual. Is that not true?
I think it's the discretion of the council. I don't know, Doug, if you had any input into that. I think that change came from your office.
Maybe they think the city officials is you, the city manager, this, you know, all the different heads.
So the, so the protocol manual is supposed to govern several things. So first and foremost, it governs city council meetings, and it doesn't just go to city officials. In that respect, it goes to, you know, even members of the public and staff as well. The secondary part of it is, it is contemplated to be a document that would be used by other committees. You just essentially substitute the word city council or mayor for, or, you know, president or chairperson, and city council member, it's board person, and you apply to them. Because, again, one of the goals is to do it on a consistent basis, so somebody walking in can get a feel for what the process is gonna be, whether or not they're at one of our commissions, whether they're at the planning committee, or whether or not they're at the city council. But at the end of the day, there's no strong preference either way. And so it's, however, I think council feels most appropriate in using it. But it is supposed to be a guiding document, I think, as the city manager said, to, in the absence of direction from the municipal code or something that's otherwise governed by law, that this would be a background document for at least process. And then we'll have the other documents that kind of go into a little bit more about the committees themselves.
So those, the other documents that we've talked about, that will apply to committees and commissions, where will those be housed?
I mean, right now, they're pretty much housed out of the city clerk's office. So when somebody is assigned, you know, when you make an appointment to a city committee, they get mailed, that individual gets mailed out the committee handbook.
Yeah, I got all the folders.
And then the municipal code is, our municipal code, so both online and...
Okay, I was just wondering, like, if that answers my questions, if they have their separate packets, or if it would be part of this one? All right.
So I was thinking about what David said, when we were talking about the general plan and the local coastal plan, and, you know, why have one thing in one place, and then something in the other place? And so my recommendation would be that perhaps we're not ready yet, we're not there, until we're ready to integrate the commission and committees' handbooks into the council handbook. If we're gonna keep them separate, then we really should just call it a council handbook still. And then when we have updated the committees and commissions handbook, and we're ready to integrate it into this piece, then we could call it the official name that was proposed. I lost that, what that is.
City officials.
The city officials. So, yeah, that's what I'm thinking, is that it is confusing, you know, for the community, like, are they gonna look for it under the official? Are they gonna look for it under the commission and committees? Is it gonna be replicated, or is it gonna be in two spots? If we're gonna have one, let's just have one, or we'll have two and call it what it really is.
I just brought that up, because Fred brought it up, about, and then you'd look at that. And so I think if, in the long run, if we have, this could be, well, I don't know what you call it, maybe appendix A, and appendix B with the commission and the committee members, or something. But I think we've come up with what we think should be added or changed, and we should adopt it.
Yeah, I don't, I like the content of it, so I'm not gonna not adopt it because of the title, so we can call it whatever you all want to call it.
Yeah, it's all semantics.
Let's just approve the manual, whatever it is. I so moved to approve, approve the manual, which it says here, and direct staff to return with final revised city officials protocol manual 2024 at a future meeting with, for approval.
How do I do an alternate motion? Wait till this one passes?
This would, this would be the approval.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I think we're asking for approval today, and...
Yeah, you're right.
That's the best recommendation. And then it would be adopted, and then it would be immediately effective, beginning the next, you know, tomorrow.
So I'm sorry, too many people were talking at the same time. Is there a possibility to do a second motion? Not approving that, but an alternate motion, is what I guess I'm trying to say.
Well, there's no second to this motion, so...
Well, because nobody's had a chance.
No, I'm just saying, I'm just telling her, there's no second, so we have a...
All right, we have a motion on the table. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion by council member Stillman, and a second by council member Akon Salazar. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, no, now, yeah. But we can have discussion in the motion.
Now, you can, you can, okay, sorry.
Thank you, I was just wondering, the protocol. So that's all I knew. And I knew that we had not had an opportunity to even finish that, which is why I was asking what the protocol was. So I would motion to accept the manual as is with a change of title, and then we will come back to it with, in another year, when we have actually got the other work ready, and we can integrate it all into this one fine city officials program, protocol manual that will include city council committees and commissions.
We have a, we have a motion on the floor.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Now Kimberly made a motion, so if somebody wants to second Kimberly's motion...
Well, don't we have to rescind the motion that we already have, if we're gonna do it? I mean, we either move on this, or we don't.
No, you do not. You have to wait and see if you have a second.
No, wait till we see if we have a second, council member White's motion.
Before you move forward, can I get a clarification on her motion? Because she didn't say what she would like the name to be. I think I know, because she said it before, but it's not part of the motion. So I'm assuming that you want it to be the city council protocol manual.
Exactly, thank you.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Shh. Please let me finish. Thank you. We have a motion and a second on the first motion. We have a second motion by council member White. Does anybody gonna second that motion? Motion dies, so all in favor of the first motion?
Aye. But I've never known it to be this way, to have a motion and a second motion. I can see amending the motion, asking if the...
No, we'd...
Okay, I won't get into it.
Okay, Kimberly, how do you vote on this?
I will vote yes, because we can come back to it in another year and see where we're at.
I think that's a great idea. Thank you. All right, motion. Thank you. We charge extra for that, usually. But that was great, that was governance in action right there. Now we all have a little reminder of how alternate motions go. All right. Let's move on to, yeah, okay, we're good. New business, Introduce Ordinance Number 1568, Amending the Mobilization Rent Stabilization Regulations to Reduce the Mobile Home Rent Stabilization Fee. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yeah, just in real brief, the current ordinance sets a minimum fee for administering the rent stabilization program at $10. And currently, the, the amount of money that we have to operate the program and to defend or take administrative actions, we feel is sufficient at this time, and would like to reduce that fee to $5. And the fee reduction has been adopted in the, in the fee resolution, but in order to enact it, we actually have to change the underlying ordinance to allow... But in order to enact it, we actually have to change the underlying ordinance to allow for something different than a $10 minimum fee. So this action would eliminate in the ordinance, a minimum fee and would defer to the fee resolution currently set at $5. So it would reduce everybody's payment by half.
So I'd like to make a motion to introduce ordinance number 1568, amending the mobile home rent stabilization regulations to reduce the mobile home rent stabilization fee.
Let's see if we have any public comment. We have a motion and a second, but let's see if anybody would like to comment on this. Anybody on Zoom?
You've been really good. She sat after it.
All right, well, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, motion passes. Uh, thanks, Alex.
I didn't get to finish my staff report.
You did great, though. Next, we have PowerPoint next time. You were kidding. I need another binder. All right. The city appreciates public input. This time is provided for people to address the council or submit written communications on matters not on the agenda. Please know that pursuant to the Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on the posted agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action will be set by the council for future agenda or refer to staff. Speakers addressing the council are limited to three minutes. And if you are in person and want to make a comment, please line up at the podium. Please raise your hand if you're on Zoom or press star nine if you're on the phone line.
Hello again. My name's Joanne McGary. I spoke at the beginning of the meeting about the three things I had emailed you about. I again appreciate those of you who have emailed back that at least you received my emails. I hope you do read them. I would love to talk with some of you about some of these ideas, including this Redwood Peace and Justice Center. I've been, I have a mantra these days that's remember the past, be in the present, live for the future. So in studying a lot of things about the far past and the recent past, you know, Arcata is a unique place in, on the planet. Truly it is. And I think we need to remember that and honor that and look at the history of how this community has evolved. I fear a little bit for the future in terms of us just going the way of a lot of other communities in terms of development and growth and design even. Lisa Brown spoke about character or maybe it was someone else who spoke about the character of our town. And, you know, I ask everyone here in this room and who's watching and out in the community, who do we want to be as a community? And one of the things that is really important to me is, and what is talked about in developing thriving communities, is to have that third place, that third place where people have their home, they have their workplace, and then they have a place where they can go. And for many, it could be a cafe or it could be a gymnasium or it could be, you know, I went up to the Harambe Center today and I went to the sanctuary, creative sanctuary today, and those are third places. And there's those of us who are really interested in a lot of peace and justice issues. And I'm not understanding what Equity Arcata is all about, but maybe they could play a role and maybe, you know, the city could play a role and the community members could play a role in really developing a gathering place. We had some issues that came up in the fall, intense issues that took a lot of time at this, at the city council meetings. And a lot of those kinds of issues could really be helped by having a place where people can dialogue, that we can talk about them, which this forum doesn't really permit too much. So I see a value in having a third place that's a peace and justice type center where we can come and talk about issues that impact us. And so that's one of the things. I think it would make Arcata, it would improve our character. It's a good character addition.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sure you all received that letter from Arcata Fire District. And that's a pretty serious letter. And I would also say that there's been a couple other times that, that you may not be aware of because it was the planning commission, but I believe it was August 4th, 2022, Arcata Fire Eric came before the planning commission and basically gave a presentation and said, absolutely do not approve any heights at this time. We're going to be working on gathering the information, finances and all our safety concerns about the project. Unfortunately, two weeks later, you had a joint session between the planning commission and the city council and you, you had a majority of you went for seven stories. They then spent quite a bit of time, tried to get back to having another presentation, kept on getting postponed. And I believe that was January 10th, 2023. They came between the planning commission. I'm probably, I'm assuming maybe you saw it, but I'm just like double checking that the end of their presentation, they said, absolutely nothing can be approved at this point over three stories because we do not have the personnel and we do not have the equipment. This is, this is a very long-term process with you get the funding. And I'm, part of this was also in that letter, but I'm just giving you a little bit more of a background of how many times they've kind of screamed at the city to pay attention. And they're screaming because they are our first responders. They're the ones that have the education. They went to college. They got the training and we need to respect that. And what I'm seeing is a difference of opinion from the city. And I want to know who in the city has the education that's directly related to this issue? Who has the experience? And I don't think anybody does. So, I mean, you're basically putting their lives at jeopardy if something's built and there, we don't have any coverage for that. You're going to also potentially, this is why I tie this story into Miami, because, you know, it's, it could bankrupt the city if it goes wrong. And from the standpoint of something's built and we don't have them to be able to capable of services that, people will die. And there's going to be some accountability from the decision makers. And I know I'm not a lawyer, but I'm giving you some tough love here that you could actually face a jury on this. So, and it isn't that it just doesn't happen because I've kept track of this. It happened in New York. It's the same exact example they gave on in January, there was an oven fire that they said at Sora Place, there was two. This happened in New York and a lot of people died. It was a little kid playing with the stove and, you know, it, it has consequences. It's a big gamble. So please, you need to really consider this.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Fred Wise. I'd like to speak about this process that we're going to be seeing over the next couple of months. And I'm just going to speak in very general terms and perhaps I'll speak separately with the mayor or city manager about this also. Things are set up to have one public hearing that's noticed for May 29th. And then as I understand it, there'll be, the meeting will be continued to future dates. There's a lot of problems with that from the public standpoint. One is that it only allows one opportunity to speak because it's a continued meeting. Second is that the public really doesn't know what's going to be talked about in any given session. And we don't even know in advance what dates you're going to be talking about things until you decide. I propose that there be three notice public hearings. The first for the EIR and Gateway Area Plan, the second for the Gateway Code, and the third for the general plan. I'm likely to get more specific than that. In terms of Arcata Fire District situation, a lot has been said that there's been talk about having the buildings built to a higher standard, having what are four, five, or six, or seven story buildings built to the standard of a taller building, mid-rise building that's 12 or 15 stories. That is all well and good for the building itself. It's not, doesn't change things so much for the occupants of the building in the case of smoke inhalation, that sort of thing. It also adds tremendously to the cost. And so it makes it unlikely that the buildings will be built at all. In other words, it's not a feasible solution, in my opinion, and from what I've read. So the solution eventually will be to upgrade the personnel and facilities and equipment of the Arcata Fire District. As I said, it's a long-term process. What to do in the meantime? I've, a year ago on arcata1.com came up with some ideas. I think the Arcata Fire District is working, coming with some ideas. We want to come to something that will work so we can have housing. But meantime, as the previous speaker Gregory Daggett said, we're facing an unsafe situation. The specifics of what I have, I'll be glad to put in writing. And thanks for your work. We're moving forward. I can see it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody on Zoom?
We do. We have one caller. Go ahead, call in user.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Hello? This is, hello?
We can.
Okay, my name is Lisa. I'm here. I'm calling in to actually request an agenda item. In January of 2022, you held an open house in which the community was able to have input at the outset of when you were deciding the gateway plan. And, and a huge concern at that meeting was about building heights. And I don't think you, you've got now several neighborhoods that you call opportunity zones that gave you the Sunset, Arcata Heights, and I forget what the other one was. But all these, all these zones are neighborhoods. They're distinct neighborhoods that, you know, I don't know where this idea for opportunity zones came down, whose idea it was. And I really feel like this process has been top-down kind of driven and not really coming from the community because all those comments were kind of shunted aside. And I don't think you really know what the people in the neighborhoods want. So I would like to request an agenda item to bring this issue back up about building heights, bring in all the concerns about the fire. And Andrea Tuttle, who's an environmental planner with Cal Poly, wrote a letter which was just an incredibly detailed letter and, and she brought up a lot of concerns. She, she has a lot of expertise. And there were experts who, you know, there was, well, your fire chief. And then there was a seismologist who wrote in. There was Andrea Tuttle. And I asked the development director, when are we going to hear from the experts from your side? And so far I haven't heard from any experts who, they were, anyway, I'm, I'm getting a little, sorry. I want to be clear. I just want to have an agenda item where people can weigh in and we can all bring, you know, our concerns to the table, whether it's about the fires or the, that we're on the Cascada Subduction Zone and, you know, the, the ground is, is, you know, liquefied or whatever. And whatever the concerns are, we can bring them forward and the communities, the neighborhoods can have a say. And so if, if more people, if we could have an agenda item where we open it up and see what the residents of the city actually want for their particular neighborhood so that these zoning changes don't just get imposed on us top-down and the community has a say before.
Thank you, Lisa.
These policies are passed. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No other online public comment. We're on council and staff reports. Is there any staff reports from, any staff reports?
Yeah, just quickly, I wanted to let the council know and you probably saw a copy of it. The city did send a letter requesting a chance for some additional community engagement regarding a developer impact fee or a developer fee that Arcata School District was proposing. And they were holding their public hearing actually on Monday night and council member Stillman did attend. And we'll probably have an update in regards to potentially the fate of that developer fee. But our letter specifically just requested that the school district come and share some of their process that they went through and their plans and how that money might be used and how that would impact potentially development in Arcata. So while it doesn't appear as though they might not be moving forward with that fee, they are still planning to come on June 5th, just to kind of share and update the process that they did go through and what their considerations might be in the future. So I just wanted to let you know that that would be forthcoming on June 5th.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right, let's do some council report outs. Council member White, would you like to start?
Let me grab this here. I just wanted to address Joanne. Settler colonialism finds its foundation on a system of power perpetuated by settlers that repress indigenous peoples' rights and cultures by replacing it with their own. Settler colonialism is based on the theft and the exploitation of lands and resources that belong to the indigenous. I think in light of the settler colonialism and the atrocities that, and the history that happened on the plaza, I would love to see name back, land back. Maybe it would be Plaza Gudini or Gudini Plaza. And also to say that while a name change won't erase history, it will acknowledge it and remind us never again. And we are a sanctuary city. I think that it wouldn't be a bad idea to add to that, that we would be a city of peace. And so, yeah, that's what I wanted to share. What have I been doing? I attended the League of California City Redwood Empire Division meeting hosted by Rio Del. We got to hear about some community non-government organizations in disaster preparedness and Rio Del's long-term earthquake recovery efforts from Nick Brown Crawford. He's the director of coed, community organizations active in disaster. And Nick is also the chair of the Rio Del Long-Term Earthquake Recovery. He's also with Humboldt Made. I also had an honor to attend a wonderful employee recognition luncheon on D Street at the D Street Neighborhood Center. I attended Humboldt Pet Supply Arcata March Cleanup, another successful Valley West cleanup with lots of iris bulbs given away to beautify the community and neighborhood. As the city liaison, I attended a meeting at Redwood Region Economic Development Commission and also the Homeless Working Group. We received updates on safe parking, which is slated to wind down at the end of June with 22 residents leaving mid-June. The good news is many of these folks have found placement. Two got an apartment of their own. Five people went into transitional housing. Two were reunited with their family and 11 secured rentals through an assistance program and several went into supportive housing. This leaves five people and a couple families, two families that are in need of housing. So hopefully that will come to fruition in the next month or so. We also received updates from both Home Key Projects and Valley West. And we received a positive report from the Extreme Weather Shelter Countywide Coordination Program. That's all I got.
Today I spoke with the Arcata Fire Chief, McDonald, and I asked him how the work was going as far as Cal Poly, City of Arcata and the Fire District with the consultant. He told me that it's moving along and in early July, he would like to see, he's retiring the end of June. So the new chief is taking this on. He said he would like to see in the early July, a meeting with the city council, the Fire District and those appropriate at Cal Poly to sit around and talk about what we see is needed and how that would go. And, and he figured, he said he feels like the project will be completed for, or at least the draft will be completed by the end of the summer. So I just wanted to do an update on that because I think that's important and we hear about that a lot here. Old Arcata Road is doing really well. They're moving right along and it looks really good. And so I'd say the contractors have done a fantastic job. Recently, I was talking to some of the business owners in the downtown and you were present. And they mentioned that when the farmer's market, the lanes stay closed for a while after the farmer's market is over and that it's just really pretty darn dead downtown. And so I'm wondering if we, and one of the things that councilman, council member Stacy Atkinson said, we'll review it and see how it's going. And I'm thinking maybe we want to review it and think about being able to close those, open those closed lanes at an earlier time. So I just am recommending that. The other thing is that the governor's budget is going to have effects probably on all of us. is going to have effects probably on all of us. And definitely, one of the things I was concerned about is that the governor's budget is going to be causing issues as far as our behavioral health center in Arcata. They're taking, the governor is taking funds away from some of the, like, they were allocated funds. He's pulling money away. He's putting it elsewhere. And so, I, I think that's really unfortunate. Also, he's concerned about the middle mile. That's something in broadband that we've been really interested in, being able to meet that. And there'll be a reduction in women in construction, which will be reduced by about $10 million. And that's a program we just completed up here with women in construction. So, I think it's, it's unfortunate, especially the behavioral health because that was moving right along. And there was going to be some other funding for that. And I don't know if we'll even get it now. But I'm just bringing that forward because I saw that. So, I went to some things she did. I went to some things they did. Anyway, I've been around.
All right, I'm going to take a deep breath. So, I've been working with the tribe at Cal Poly. I've been working with Dr. Kutchibaldi and Dr. Caitlin Reed and with their Native American Studies Department, their Food Sovereignty Lab, and Traditional Ecological Knowledge Institute, looking at some opportunities to do some land back and some Bayside Park, and perhaps with the Bayside Park Farm or something else. And I just, it is, when you're working with the tribe, the tribe has to come to you. You cannot sit up here as a white person and virtue signal about what you want the tribe to do. You have to build those relationships and have the tribe come to you. And that is what I'm trying to work on. I've been building these relationships for the three-plus years that I've been on the council and looking for opportunities. So, these things, as with everything in government, do not happen overnight. They have, comes with building relationships. They come from making sure that the tribe is taking the lead, which is of the utmost importance. So, I just wanted to say that. Also, I had an HWMA meeting. We approved our budget. And part of that budget was setting aside more money to, for cleanups for cities. Some of the reasons that Arcata, I guess, has not been taking advantage of that is because our franchise agreement for ecology does not allow them to transfer, to pick up those. And correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe I need to talk to ecology. But we have no way of like transporting what we clean up back to HWMA or something. So, I'd like to kind of investigate that further because I'd like to be able to take advantage of the big pot of money that HWMA has set aside for cleaning. Thank you.
I only have a couple of things. I do have my HCOG meeting tomorrow, so I will have an update at our next meeting. But just a reminder that we're still in May, and it is Bike Month. So, not that you only can ride your bike in May, but, you know, we're emphasizing it this month. And then, just thank you to the people that, the staff members that did put on the employee luncheon. Thank you for that. And also, congratulations to the folks there that were recognized for their service in the city. And I think that's all I have.
All right, let's look at, did you have something else?
Yeah, I do, real quick. I just wanted to mention too, in response, that I have been working with Michelle Vassal and have been invited into a collective conversation to explore creation of new local formation designed to acknowledge and support the Weot sovereignty, help non-Weot people learn to be good guests on Weot territory, and to learn how to be in balance and in right relationship with the earth and all of our relative, relatives and relations. So, I'll keep you posted on that. I'll be going to that next week. So, there you go.
Wonderful, thank you. Let's talk about HSA meetings. I think we've all confirmed May 22nd is our special meeting in closed session.
Yeah, so, May 22nd, you'll be at 5:30. It'll be to discuss your city manager recruitment for future city manager. May 28th will be your special meeting. You will be starting at 4 o'clock. Also, it'll be a discussion around city manager recruitment that day. And then, May 29th will be your special meeting around Gateway Area Plan, the Form Based Code, and the General Plan updates. And then, we will also have a special meeting on June 12th. This will replace your June, June, what would be Juneteenth meeting at 6 o'clock. That will be here in the council chambers to conduct some of that regular business, and you'll be adopting your budget.
Wonderful. And just to remind everybody, I will not be at the June 5th meeting, but we'll have a meeting before that, so.
So, you have something else? So, in July, we have one meeting. Is it the 17th of July? Is that correct?
Correct. So, you will have a break from that, June 12th until July 17th, right now.
The only reason I mention that is that I'm just thinking about the Fire District and if they're, maybe we need to talk to them about coordinating.
Well, I'm meeting with Eric in the next couple of days. So, I think we can all do our due diligence to reach out to...
Well, I'm just concerned if they're going to set a meeting up in the beginning of July, we are not going to be here.
I'm also talking to incoming chief tomorrow, so talk dates.
Meeting's adjourned.